General, call the meeting to order. Please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening all, especially those viewing at home seeing there's no one in audience at the moment. I'm sure people will be here shortly.
I like this audience.
Go to item two, Mr. Foti. Legal bills for June 2013.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for June 2013 in the amount of $8,145.14 as follows. Copeland and Page PC General, $5,169.14. Copeland and Page PC Labor, $2,826. American Arbitration Association, $150.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Skip over Powell's comment. Item four, appointment election workers. Mr. Valiakonis, I did receive your email concerning Mrs. Stat. If she's watching, I do wish her well. And I think we can proceed even in her absence.
Yes, you have a detailed recommendation from her that was included in the packet. And she provides the name of the recommendations through the Board of Registries. And she would ask you to take affirmative action on these, similar to the way you've done in the past, and recommending option two be approved by the Board assignment.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just in the form of disclosure, I will not be participating in the discussion, deliberations of the Board, or voting. I will be standing on the vote. I have a family member who is on the list to be included as an election worker, so therefore I will not be participating.
Thank you. Mr. Foti?
Mr. Chairman, I move to exercise the following option for appointment of election workers for election. This is held between September 1, 2013, through August 31, 2014. Appoint election officers from the list submitted by the registrars as recommended by the registrars.
Second.
Have a motion or a second. No further discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, one extension. Move to annual municipal review of town owned land. Mr. Valiakonis?
Board members, as you know, we annually conduct a review of municipal properties to determine whether there are particular properties that the town wishes to offer up for sale. I'm pleased to report at the present time, there are no properties that we have requests that are pending that have not come before the Board for action. So this is the typical normal review which is done where we distribute a list to town departments, boards, and committees. We will ask them to state whether they have an interest in the property. And if they do have an interest in the property, to state what their interest would be. We've been provided with a summary list this evening, which generally indicates that with several exceptions, that there is not interest in all of the properties. There is however, as you go through the list, a number of ones that have been requested. And what we've done in the past, as we've gone through, we've taken this list and tried to call it down to a reasonable number of properties that we think might bring some revenue into the town for the Board's consideration. And then bring that list back before the Board for its discussion on a case-by-case basis. We did that approximately a year ago. I believe we brought in, it wasn't a total of nine properties, but it was nine properties which represented multiple parcels that had been aggregated together that possibly might constitute a building lot. The Board at that time indicated that it did not wish to sell a majority of those properties. So we'll go through the same process this year again, and come back to the Board with some recommendations in terms of properties that we may wish to offer for sale. And by the same token, if the Board members have parcels that they would like to offer or see offered for sale, this is a good opportunity to do so.
Board members, Mr. Messerius?
Greg, you know, one of the issues, and I don't know if it's still predominant in on the list here, but one of the issues was that it seemed like to me, a number of parties, departments said yes. And have we ever gone back and actually talked to them about the why?
No, what we've tried to do is rather than getting an explanation for a hundred odd parcels, each which has its own unique attributes, if there are parcels that you or the public wishes to purchase or offer for sale, then what we do is we require them to provide a detailed explanation on those particular parcels. To go through the list and provide a detailed explanation for each is a bit much. So again, if there are particular properties that the town and the Board would like to offer, and they have flags next to them that have indicated that the department would like to hold those, we'll request that they put forth detailed reasons as to why they're proposing.
I guess my concern is that, you know, the housing partnership and conservation, I guess I can understand if it's wetlands.
DPW.
The housing partnership however, has got a lot of VSs.
Over the, Mr. Jim, oh, the S relation to the housing partnership, of course, their primary goal and responsibility is affordable housing. So what they're looking at is lots that are potentially buildable or could be combined with adjacent lots to build one to two units, because a lot of these are small lots, you know, as affordable. Again, you could partner with developers, you can do all sorts of things. The community has not had an appetite to do that in recent years. And with the development of Edgewood over here, took care of 40B requirements in one fell swoop, which took an awful lot of pressure off of an awful lot of neighborhoods whereby if some of these properties, if the Board were to sell them to private developers, may in fact, you know, go 40B in these neighborhoods. So the housing partnership has done, has expressed an interest in a number of parcels which are potentially buildable. And again, with sometimes with assistance from a rezoning, like a plan unit development type option type thing, may be able to help meet our affordable housing needs. So depending upon what the appetite of this and future boards are, will dictate how we approach meeting our affordable housing needs. That being said, new census data is out, which will include those 400 units down the street here, which means we're supposed to have a goal of 10%. But 400 more units, that's 40 more units that we have to build. It's a far cry from the 400 that we were short. So there's no doubt that that particular development down there eased a substantial amount of pressure on this community in meeting our affordable housing needs. So that's why you see the housing partnership's interest. So we get a lot of these, would take an awful lot of work to get them to reach a buildable stage.
I'm assuming this is on a spreadsheet. Could you put a copy of the spreadsheet, not a PDF, but the spreadsheet in Dropbox?
Yeah, sure. I just wanted to comment on Sleckman O'Leary's position, which is accurate, that the town meeting a number of years ago voted to declare that any municipal lands, even though they may be considered to be undersized, not meeting the dimensional requirements, may be designated for affordable housing. And as such, there's a waiver for some of the lot sizes in frontage requirements, which is again, why the housing partnership might be looking at parcels that we might view at and say that those are undersized, that under the town zoning regulations, in fact, you can construct them.
Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Valiakonis, can you explain the DPW, why they were interested in so many of these parcels?
I know that when the town was considering sewage, that typically what we like to do is we'd like to reserve properties that may be necessary in promotion of that, perhaps for some lift stations and such. So that's typically what the DPW would be doing, is looking out and projecting in the future, that if we have a sewer infrastructure system, what parcels we need to reserve to be able to accommodate that. And to a large degree, that's what it is. There are other parcels that as you look at the DPW facility, that surround existing town owned lands that they would have an interest in. Most of it relates to infrastructure for the future.
Mr. Valiakonis, concerning the large parcel up at Swan Pond, I know at one point in time, our assessor gave us a value of that property that we had requested, but I think we all felt as though she valued it probably as raw land and not as buildable. Just looking for an update on that.
I will get the Board one with the newer value, based upon what we would consider to be the highest and best use for that property.
Thank you. Want to go further? Nope. Mr. Foti?
Mr. Valiakonis, today? I may have missed it at the beginning. Is this every lot that is town owned on here, or is it town control on here?
Yes, it's lots that are considered to be vacant property.
Because I know the lot on Valley Road is vacant property, it's not on here, and it's...
Could be that it's designated, or it's under the control of the association.
Okay.
It might be already be under the control of the association.
I believe it is. Yep, I believe it is.
Is that the, the would-be playground?
Yeah.
Yes.
Would-be playground.
I just wanted to point out...
Just once, excuse me, is it the association there in the neighborhood?
No.
It's not?
Okay.
But it was supposed to be for the use of the neighborhood?
Correct.
Good, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I was just busy writing something down. We've, any of the properties that we've offered for sale in the past, you can see in the left-hand column prior to the map, we flagged properties that in the past we've offered for sale. And in the case, the ones that are listed here indicate that there were no bidders. Could be that the price was too high, could be that just there was general no interest in them.
The lot that is across, Mr. O'Leary helping with the street that intersects the Joker's Wild and that lot?
Well, Pately Road.
Right. Was that lot ever sold? There was some issue that arose recently. Mr. Prisco, you may have some information concerning that lot? Because I don't recall it ever coming before.
If you recall, Mr. Senior, we had discussions with the owner of Joker's Wild. We have some parcels that actually are on Main Street.
Right.
You know, two feet by, or whatever it is, which is actually access to the properties. They had expressed an interest in it. And then, and they were going to put together a proposal to incorporate it into their properties, and at their cost, just whatever was the transfer, we were inclined to whatever the transfer was, advertise it and just whatever the transfer cost was, let them have it.
That was a few years ago, but...
Yeah, a couple of years ago. And then, and then there was the other parcel which has the...
Billboard.
Has billboard on it.
Right.
Which they had an interest in, which we derive some revenue from.
Billboard is a moneymaker for the town, that brings in about $12,000 a year. So we want to retain it because it's a good use of a piece of wet property. I just do want to bring up about the issue that was brought up about the Joker's Wild property. I don't recall the particulars of what happened, but there was a requirement that there be some surveying done in accordance with Sleckman O'Leary. The proponent came forward and said that they would do those services, but they wished to be made whole in the event they didn't receive the bid. And we couldn't agree to those terms. In other words, we couldn't reimburse someone for the cost of surveying, and that's where...
But, Mr. Prisco, did you hear something recently about that parcel?
Yeah, so we do have those, the areas that are across the front of those properties. The larger portion, that's sort of an empty parking lot that gets gravel in it, that actually did sell, right? The town did end up selling that piece of property, I believe, to the owners of Joker's Wild.
There was a parcel that did sell.
The parcel in front of it has not sold. I didn't know it sold either, I just learned this...
I don't ever recall us...
No, there was, there wasn't that one parcel that did sell on Main Street.
I didn't notice this, I just learned this myself.
Yes.
Was it the one that was behind it?
I don't recall.
No, it's separate, it's between the street, so if you come off of 28, you take a right at Joker's Wild, there's a little empty lot to the left, Joker's Wild to your right. That little empty lot has sold.
Well, that empty lot, the empty lot itself was owned by Mr. Piero years ago. And his estate, I believe, sold it to Joker's Wild, but the access to it...
Is still ours.
Is still ours.
That's still for sale.
The town did not own that vacant lot where they parked their cars and stuff.
Now that makes sense.
Okay.
So remember, Mr. Piero did own that property.
Now...
Late Mr. Jerry Piero, old great guy.
Yeah, and a lot that has the sign on it, that's mostly wetlands anyways, so...
The billboards?
Yeah.
Looks like it's all, it looks like they need to get to it with a crane.
Yeah, but that's one of the best moneymakers the town has.
We should take that off the list if it's on the list. We should take it off the list.
We agree, because it's attractive in terms of providing us with a reliable revenue stream.
We don't want to give that up. But I would like to see somebody, I mean, I would like to see them follow through and get rid of those two little pieces of parcels of property that are but Joker's Wild property.
I think, you know, and again, I'm surprised, you know, Mr. Senior represented the applicant at the time. He's been around long enough, certainly the CTC. I think the inclination that was given to the people at the time was the Board was inclined to accept an offer to...
Get the proper survey and...
For the cost of surveying, others to transfer it.
Right.
So...
I would be willing, actually, I would be in favor of actually picking up some of the surveying if they didn't follow through, or at least share the expense with them to get the chance to get this sold to them. I'd like to see it move on, I think it's a worthy investment.
It's not going, it's from an assessed value standpoint, it's not going to bring in much more tax revenue to the town. But as far as clearing up entrance address...
Correct.
Issues, you know, I think it would be important to the property owner to get it. And what we're offering is certainly a heck of a deal. We shouldn't have to share any of the costs personally, because the value is totally to them, not to the town.
I have a question, Mr. Plaine.
Mr. Prisco.
With those, the way the property is set up, if there is an accident in the access, accessing the property and vacating the property, and it, you know, isn't, don't we have some liability? Since there's so much activity that goes in and out of that place? I mean, I'd just like to see us cleaning up no matter what, but you know, I do get some concern about it.
I wouldn't think so.
I would think so. Okay.
Ask the lawyer.
What does he know?
Well, ask the lawyer. My guess is he'd take the case on, but probably not.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Next. Moving on.
What's the next step, Steph? What would you do with this, besides getting at the spreadsheet?
I will get together with staff, and we will put together a list of properties that we think we could perhaps offer for sale. By the same token, if the Board members wish to see parcels, and we'll put this on Dropbox so you can edit it, please submit it back to us, because again, the only way they ever make it to a public hearing phase is to end up on a list that we want to consider them for sale.
Could we, is there a way we can put this online? So you see there's properties on, let's say, Borough's Road or Strawberry Lane. Is there a way to put something in, maybe take an ad out in the transcript or something that people can go to a link and see if there's any properties that are in their neighborhood that they may be interested in? Because I think that's the biggest issue, is people don't know this stuff is available.
We could do that. I know, you see, I know up in our neighborhood, Sean and I live, there are some parcels out there that I've approached some of the director of others and said, you know, why don't you pick it up? Because the Board is inclined to whatever the cost of transfer is, we're willing to, you know, and, you know, people were a bit reluctant, only because they just got the new tax bill, whole thing, so my census valuation's going up, why would I do that? When, you know, it's not buildable, and that sort of thing. And I tried to, you know, press a point of that, you don't know what's going to come down the road, what can change, you know? Affordable housing, certain different restrictions apply, you know, nothing's going to go house next door, but preserve your interest in it.
Especially there's a lot of houses now getting to that age where septic systems are going to have to be changed out.
And that's the pitch I've been giving to some of my neighbors, is say, you know, just express an interest in, you know, for about $1,200, which is what we're letting a lot of these things go for, which is the cost of transfer. It makes a lot of sense. And I know if I were a director of, I'd be looking at it, saying, you know, if it's $1,200 bucks, yeah, my assessment might go up a little bit, but...
So if we can get this list out to the public, so they can see all these locations, I think we'll have a better result than we've had in the past.
It might get a little more interest.
Yeah.
I guess you could probably put a link to it.
Good idea, right? Yeah, we can, we can link it, we can send it out on News Blast, and we can put it on our website.
Very good.
And that will no doubt encourage additional people to come through.
Anything further on this issue?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Valiakonis, would you like to go to your town administration's report?
I do. I guess the most pressing matter is the issue of local aid. And I'm sure you read in the paper that the governor issued some vetoes, which may impact our unrestricted local government aid. As I understand, that there was a 19% reduction included in the governor's plan for unrestricted local government aid. And there are no amounts that are specifically available to North Reading, but if you were to take that amount and just carry it forward, 19% would be about $292,000 lost revenue.
Would you say that number again?
Two ninety-two.
Two ninety-two.
Two ninety-two. Because we received one, we anticipated, or should I say the legislature, the joint budget that was adopted by the legislature was identical to the numbers that were voted at town meeting. And I think you recall, we previously reported that to the Board, that those numbers that came out of the House and Senate, and then the Conference Committee, for both Chapter 70 and for unrestricted aid, were identical to what was voted at town meeting. We do not have any word on cuts to Chapter 70, and I would suspect to say that there aren't any, because there would be a ruckus out there if there were. But the local unrestricted aid under the governor's proposal stands to be cut back 177 million throughout the state, or about 19%. So if there were to be a 19% cut to local aid, it was not something that we would have anticipated. And we will need to do some scrambling immediately, because once we begin spending down money, then we potentially run into a deeper hole for October town meeting. So my understanding is it's due to be a decision coming out this week in terms of whether the legislature will override the governor's veto. We would like to wait until that happens, but needless to say, a $292,000 gap will not be something that will be easily solved on the town side.
Okay.
Mentioned that, so it's a shame that we are there, which is too bad.
Mr. Messerius?
I agree, maybe we should wait for the legislature to veto or not veto, and then, but if they don't veto it, and the governor gets his way, then I think maybe at our next meeting, you should be prepared to present some ideas on how we get to a balanced budget.
I will do that. And I'll keep my fingers crossed that the legislative leadership leads. What I've read and what I've heard is that there's favorable comments on the legislative leadership side to look at overriding this and protecting the interests of cities and towns. Keep in mind that this is coupled with the anticipated reduction in Chapter 90 monies on top of it. So we had anticipated a sizable increase in Chapter 90, and the governor decided that he was not going to fully fund it. As a matter of fact, he was going to fund it at levels below the last fiscal year. So it would be both a cut in Chapter 90 road money, plus a cut in local aid, which would have no doubt consequences on the town in terms of how we would, we would close that gap.
Okay.
Any other questions on that, comments?
Then we'll know by the end of the week. I guess, qualifications after, here in the newspaper. But I'm hearing also is that I believe the legislature will override the vetoes and move forward, so...
Let's hope that's true.
Very welcome meeting, very welcome information to receive. Another item of cost is, I've been informed that Covanta, who is the company that we use as the insight for our solid waste and recycling, has submitted to us a proposal to increase the term of their contract. And as a result of looking to increase the term of their contract, presently we're in a contract for the end of 2015, so June 30, 2015 is the drop dead date on our Covanta contract. And we have our tipping fees, which have been locked, and the tipping fee is the cost per ton for the disposal of the refuse. So as a result of the proposal to increase it out through June 30 of 2018, they've submitted a new tipping fee price structure to us. And just looking at the numbers, the numbers are favorable, and I would just raise as a point that for this fiscal year, our tipping fee is based upon a cost of $73 a ton. The proposal that came in would be $68 a ton for this fiscal year if we were to sign that contract extension. July 1 of 2014, we're paying, we would be paying $75 a ton under the existing contract structure. Under the new contract structure, it would be $68, and so forth. So again, by extending the term of the contract, they're looking to lock in their reliable sources of refuse that they need. And as a result of that, they're looking to give the town a break in terms of what the cost would be. So we will analyze that, and I would be welcome to any comments that the Board may have on that.
Online, an extension?
It would be three years, through June 30 to 2018.
What is the cap at?
Yeah, the cap, what's the cap in 18?
18, we have an option here, and I'm looking at the option, would be $81 a ton. If we were to lock it in, it would be $70 a ton.
If, oh, right now, the current contract calls for an option extension, and it's at 81, and they'll cap it at...
Correct, 70.
Well, let me tell you, I would absolutely jump on that. I know, and I just negotiated for myself, for, I'm sorry, for the city of Chelsea several years ago, and those are very good numbers, very good numbers.
Caps out at 70?
Yeah, capping out at 70 is definitely advantageous, because I'm, you know, I would be shocked that there's another community that, at least in south of here, that's paying anywhere near that, that they're paying at least $5 more a ton.
Very good.
Just in terms of math again, we generate about 5,100 tons, so that's, the value of the contract is almost a little bit under $400,000, based upon the contract structure. So I mean, the savings are real, and it means it's a savings to the right pairs, which is important.
Mr. Messerius?
Greg, is there a penalty if we don't approve by the amount of estimated tonnage?
The prior contracts did have penalty terms in there, the current, new contract does not have a penalty term, because the EP is mandating recycling, and as a result of those recycling efforts, there's no penalty clauses in there. Just a couple of other quick items.
Excuse me, I would echo Mr. Foti's...
Yeah, please.
Sagely advice here, based upon his profession, I would encourage you to look at it strongly and quickly, and appears pretty favorable.
Absolutely.
Before they change their money.
I would agree. Consensus of the Board?
Sounds good. Thank you. I'm informed by Chief Murphy that the policy dealing with civil fingerprinting was approved. It has to, had to be submitted to the Mass Department of Criminal Justice. It was done so, the various versions you may have heard were revised again and again, but the policy now has been approved by Mass Criminal Justice, which means the bylaw that was created requires the Board to adopt that policy, so we'll bring it back for the Board before its adoption. Hopefully it will be...
Was that with the laundry list? No, no, we didn't get the laundry list.
We didn't get the laundry list, right?
You can always go back.
Mr. Prisco?
No, I wanted to talk a little bit about that, because I think we failed, we definitely failed the townspeople on this. I think it's obvious, and I will admit even myself, I didn't pay as much attention to that list as I should have. But I still think it's worthy of us going back between now and October town meeting, and going back to that list, reducing it down to where we really needed to add on. The critical items we need to add on in there. We don't need that big laundry list. I think that was misdirection on our part. But let's not give up on what we're trying to accomplish. I have had some discussion with some of the FinCom members, and, you know, we do have to go back to them to get approval to put it back, okay? And I only asked them, because they said, we're done with it, we're moving on, and I really hope they don't, they don't take that tact. Because this hurts the town if we don't do the right thing. Just because we made a mistake initially, we should be able to learn from those mistakes and go forward.
Why do we have to go back to FinCom?
Any item that doesn't pass town meeting cannot be brought back within a period of time without an affirmative vote of the Finance Committee.
I thought if it was a financial impact, right?
It would charge you a fee.
So that's the...
The fee is the, the fee is the...
I read, I checked it out, that's why I reached out to them.
But that's all right, again, I don't, I don't have any fear about that too. And I agree with Mr. Prisco. I think, you know, that we can call that list down to something a little bit more reasonable, and come back at October town meeting and modify it a bit.
A bit.
Again, I think at the time, I think I said, holy smokes, I think we're all going to need FinCom pretty good when we're done.
We were all drinking from a fire hose.
Something wrong with it?
Some of it should be.
True. But I think we can put together a little more reasonable, add a little bit more to the list of...
I don't disagree.
For the safety of our town, I think we have to... And again, if the Finance Committee wants to reject it, let them reject it.
So I'd like to recommend...
But I don't think that should, you know, hold us back from proposing it.
Yeah, you know, we're in, almost through July, so I don't know when we should take the steps, but it seems to me, whenever Finance meets next, if we could get on their agenda but it seems to me, whenever finance meets next, if we could get on the agenda to stop bringing this up so you don't have to, you know, they don't say, oh, you didn't give us enough time to deal with it and manage. And I'd like to make sure we're prepared to go for October town meeting.
It shouldn't take ten minutes, you know, meeting with the chief of police as to, you know, who we think, you know, really.
No, I think I'll be, I go back to the finance committee, I would modify the list.
You're right.
Yes, sir.
Take the modified list.
What do we have to do? I'd like, let's get the ball rolling now.
They say it shouldn't take ten minutes.
Let's just take the opportunity and let's.
I'll work with the chief in terms of modifying that list and then present the chair and vice chair of the FinCom.
Mr. Chairman, I've said this before, it is our list, not the chief's list. It comes from us, not the chief.
All right, we can put on the agenda and discuss what items that we want to.
We should, and then when you bring it to the chief and, you know, get his read on, but it should come from us, not him.
Well, no, I think, I think the chief has to deal with the hawkers and the peddlers and the carnival workers, whoever it's going to be, whoever's on that list, you know, he was adamant about class-two licenses and things of that, you know, where I wasn't necessarily concerned about that.
Yeah. I just don't want to make it his responsibility. It really starts and ends with us. I don't want it to, you know, be his.
It's with his input.
Yeah, absolutely, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm seeing the interest of staying cool, thinking I have so much to do.
Mr. Fia, can I just indulge upon you, just to close the door, just to keep the room cool? Thank you. Mr. Valiakonos?
One, one final, fairly quick update. I am going to be meeting with the Community Planning Commission tomorrow. We're going to be talking about solar generation facilities, and I've asked council to rule in and weigh in on what may need to be done under zoning in terms of solar generation facilities on two avenues. One, commercially owned, and secondly, private ones that may be placed in different neighborhoods on open process.
Question. You know, you look at the cost factor side of it, do we have any revenue information?
At this time, no. What I want to do is I want to get through the regulatory requirements with the CPC before I get too deeply into the revenue side. I want to find out what their appetite is in terms of whether this is something that's regulated by zoning, and if it is, they may need to be a warrant article for October town meeting addressing this on a community-wide basis.
We had similar situations with the cell towers.
Cell towers.
With the cell towers, whereby we had some private property owners who, you know, made the move, and again, while the solar energy isn't quite in the same category as telecommunications related to the cell towers, where the state kind of stepped in, and actually, the federal government said, you can't restrict it.
You can regulate it.
You know, you can regulate it to a certain degree. We didn't have anything in place. This may be a good preemptive strike, just to take a look at the issue early on before private property owners decide to.
I understand that aspect. I'm talking more to terms of townhood generated solar power.
Not quite yet, but we will, we will revisit that issue. I just, I didn't want to lose sight of it. I wanted to give you an update and said that those are the two prongs that I'm interested in, and particularly concerned about the issue that, like, you know, Larry talked about, because I have seen these facilities in other communities literally spring up in people's backyards, and we're here to talk about the wall this evening, but, you know, the potential that there could be solar generation facilities with acres of these things that are laid out on private property, too, is something we need to be proactive on. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else on solar power?
I'm going to hold off for now on my comments on solar power.
Thank you, Mr. Valiakonos. All right, I'll move to what's listed, seven-thirty PM, public discussion, Bishop's Way retaining the wall. Can I ask, I know that the developer-owner was or were invited to attend, are they in attendance? If you could just rise.
Thank you.
Okay. You own the property, sir?
Yes.
Okay. So some ground rules this evening, all right? If you want to ask questions or comments, I ask you to please come to the podium, identify yourself and your address. All questions will go through the chair. So no one, please, speak out from your seat. Trying to hold a civil discussion. Also, in terms of the owner, this is where I come from. You own a piece of property, provided you follow rules and regulations, both local and state, you should be able to build what you want. However, I would expect any owner or developer to take into consideration the nature of the neighborhood. I don't think that was done here. All right? I don't think he gave consideration. Lemmy, you'll have an opportunity to speak. I don't think he took into consideration that neighborhood. I don't know if you own other parcels in town or developed in town, I'm just the first I've become aware of you, so I don't think you have. So this may be a one lot development, and we'll never, and these folks, your neighbors, will never see you again. So I think you took the cheap route out. What you put there, what I see on ninety-three is a sound barrier, is more aesthetically pleasing. All right? But however, we're here this evening in a joint effort to try to come to an amicable resolution to your barrier that you put on your property. And I think you did a disservice to yourself as well in terms of what you may end up selling that property for. I think you took the cheaper way out initially, and it's going to cost you and it's going to cost your neighborhood. So as a member of this community and the chair of this board, that's my personal feeling concerning what you did in that neighborhood. However, we do want to reach an amicable resolution. Is Mr. De Coler here?
Yes. Mr. De Coler, I understand that measures we're taking, and in terms of the height of the wall, it appears that the height of the wall exceeds seven feet. Now, in the two prior meetings we had relative to this wall, my understanding of seven feet was a magical height in terms of what it may, correct me if I'm wrong, if it exceeded seven feet, then certain things needed to happen. Am I having a misunderstanding of that?
The setbacks do not apply.
Jim, you might want to leave the mic so people can open here.
The setbacks do not apply to this wall or any hedge tree. This is from town, their council, that's their opinion of the zoning bylaws, which I'm fully prepared to defend, but not here, you know, in a court case, fine, which is where it'll probably end up. But that being said, the finished grade is going to be to the first block there, so there'll be five courses showing when they're done, and there's no cap, so the wall will be seven feet or under when it's done.
Mr. Foden. This goes back to something that Mr. Fia said at the meeting that Department Heads were at, and the town administrator and myself, we're, and I'm quoting Mr. Fia, is, we can't take anything off that wall, and it has to be, it should be nine foot, four inches from the top of the sidewalk. That's a quote that I wrote down as soon as he said it. So that's not seven feet. It's currently at, well, then he said it had to go minimally to a hundred and eight inches, which is nine feet. So I don't know how, and he said from the top of the sidewalk, not from, not what's buried.
No, yeah, the top of the sidewalk, as, as when they fill in, there's two feet between the top of the sidewalk and the wall. Now, that will be filled in with loom and bark mulch, and it'll be filled into that first course. So you'll end up with five blocks right now to the top of the wall, which is seven feet or under. There's no cap, from what I understand, and from that point up, it's just going to grade up to the, to the cover of the septic system, which might be two feet or whatever, you'd have to check the plan. And I believe that's where the bark mulch and the shrubs will be, and then the grass will be on the level part on top of the leach field. But there won't be any more blocks unless I heard the meeting wrong.
I don't know. I'm looking at these, I'm assuming those are, those two-foot-high blocks.
No, they're under two feet.
They are. Can, can you tell me what the height of those, what the dimensions of those blocks are?
Yeah, I think it's right.
Please come up, sir.
The side wall, the side wall is about two feet above the base.
No, I'm asking the size of the blocks.
The blocks themselves.
The blocks, what size are they?
I don't know specifically how many inches they are.
Are they sixteen, are they eighteen inches, the blocks themselves?
I don't know specifically how many inches they are.
Yeah, well, I measured from that, the first full course.
So Jim, you measured individual block, you came up with sixteen inches?
I measured the whole wall.
Oh, I know, but did you measure a block?
I did, and I did write down, it's either sixteen or eighteen.
Okay. All right. No cap? You said there's no cap on?
No cap. It's done. And it's going to grade, there's going to be the mulch and the grass and everything else. I believe that's where the nine-foot figure comes from, because it's going to grade up another, what, two, two foot, six inches from the top of that wall.
Mr. Prisco.
So what, I'm sorry. So Jim, with these pictures you provided us, you put the seven-foot line in there and you drew a line for the people in the audience, this picture. So what you're saying is they're going to come up above the sidewalk, almost a foot, with loom and mulch?
It'll grade, it'll grade up, you know, four or five inches, because they're going to fill it with loom to take the plantings and then the bark mulch. So when you're looking from the sidewalk, it'll pitch up a little bit, but it'll start at that first block. You won't see, you know, four inches of the block below it. It'll start at that first course.
And that's where you get your seven feet?
And that's where you start the finished grade from.
Just a calculation. I mean, I'm counting five blocks, all right, five blocks. If it's sixteen inches, it's six feet, eight inches, and if it's eighteen inches, it's seven feet, six inches. So whatever it is, it is. So if a block is sixteen inches, it's six foot eight, five blocks up. If it's eighteen inches, it's seven foot six. And from all the measurements as to what people have taken, seven foot six appears to be what it is.
Right. So eighteen-inch block.
So they appear to be eighteen-inch blocks from the site measurement. So if it were.
I measured below. I meant, the measurements I took on this were below that course where the finished grade's going to be.
But we're assuming, based on what you said, that five blocks are going to be shown.
Five blocks, five rows will be shown.
Five rows will be shown.
Just make sure I understood, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prisco, there.
So just make sure I understood, Mr. De Coler, is that you rather, you're recommending or stating that the neighborhood should address this issue regarding the setbacks that kick in due to the zoning through the court, rather than try to work it out with the town?
The opinion I got from, came from council, their legal council. So I'm not going to argue the zoning bylaw here. I, you know, if it goes to court, I'll argue it there.
Just wanted to understand.
Okay.
It's a fair comment. I just wanted to understand what you, what you meant by it. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to hear from you, sir, as to what you intend on doing to create, correct this disaster.
Well, first of all, I want to say that we want, we don't want to do the wall. I mean, it costs a lot of money. I mean, for the first part, then we have to pay so much, you know, including a septic and the retention.
It wasn't a different type of wall you could have put up?
I mean, so I, first of all, I just want to say, you know, for all you guys, I mean, we are on the same side. We don't want to pay, we don't want to spend that money. We couldn't build a, you know, we got a lot.
You need to address this board, not your neighbors right now.
Yeah, I don't hope to take opportunity so they understand me, you know, we are not really trying to create a problem. We want to work with everybody, really.
Did you look at other type of block or wall that you could have put in front of your property that could have been more aesthetically pleasing?
So for, for septic system, and the wall is so high, and it has structural requirements, so really, I mean, the very first thing I would like to have is those big pieces of stones, you know, those retaining wall in that neighborhood. I like those stones. We couldn't use them. You know, we don't have some.
Was there any other type of block or wall that you could have built?
No.
There's none, nothing?
No, because, because at least, you know, at least, you know, the wall, because the wall is so tall, it hold the, you know, that septic is purely built on top of the, you know, that, that corner, so it needs to hold, and that has to be filled with sand for the leasing fields. So, I mean, if we can use, you know, a big piece of stones, we hammer the back from the basement. So if we can do that, we can save money, even better, look better for us, not only to you, it to us, the same, same way, same thing.
Okay. What are you doing to mitigate?
We, from last meeting, we already have our landscaper start designing, you know, try to, I have some pictures. You want, you want to come to maybe better, you can communicate directly. So for you, Ramon, we have a design.
Can you understand the names?
And you saw whom?
My name is George Woods. I own Woods Real Estate. I was the one that brought me here to North Reading and sold the land, so.
And you are the current real estate agent that's marketing the project?
I own the company. My wife's the listing broker, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And we've been in business since nineteen seventy-seven, and I've been a builder myself for fifteen years.
So can you tell me if there's any other block that was workable?
The reason this block was selected was because it is integral part of the septic design. It's not just a wall.
I understand.
It's part of the septic design.
My question was pretty specific. Is there any? My question was pretty pointed. Is there any other type of block or wall could have been built here, other than?
I'm not aware of any. I was told this was what they had used. I'm the real estate guy.
Who told you that?
The guy that was building the wall, that designed the system, the engineer.
Mr. Chairman, I just might interject. You know, it's my understanding that at a prior meeting of either be the Conservation Commission or Planning Commission, Mr. Lou, I'm sorry, Mr. Lou. Mr. Lou represented a desire and a willingness to build a more aesthetically pleasing wall, such as the ones that are on Agatha Way and other areas of town, which I believe were pointed out to you, and you concurred that that's what you would do. And you gave your word that that's what you were going to do. And then you didn't do it. And when you didn't do it, you didn't convey to the neighbors that there was a septic design that required this. So whatever the reason was, the message that was conveyed to the neighborhood was one thing, what they walked away with and were working with you, the director butters, the mains, the director butters, working with you in anticipation of your cooperation.
Right.
And they ended up with something far different and unsightly.
So for you, Ramon, I understand. So the very first thing that we, we asked the, our engineer to, to see if there's any possibility, we have more space in that, you know, between the sidewalk to the leasing field, if we have enough space, can we have a wider space there so we can have, say, big pieces of stones? You see there, it's very narrow, but retaining wall has to be so strong to hold the whole thing.
I'm well aware of that.
So really, we were very disappointed. We wanted the wall to be lower. We wanted, we wanted to have a bigger space so we can do something else, but on up, we don't have any, any other alternative. So, so it comes down to, we, you know, we started having our landscaper to find different ways to, you know, to improve the look.
You can't read that, but I hand-wrote it out because when you printed them, it didn't come out, so all those, I wrote it on.
Mr. Foden?
I just got it outside.
So, again, at the meeting that, that was held, we all attended to, there were some give and take on both ways, and one of the things we discussed was the need for the fence on top of the wall. And I think between Mr. De Coler and Mr. Fia and everybody else in the room, it was, concession was made that the fence probably wasn't needed. And I suggested at that point, with the savings on the fence that you're going to have, is that you have a landscape architect do some.
That's what we did.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I, no disrespect to anybody, I could have done this myself. I mean, sketching a couple of plans in front of it. I was looking more towards having him do a design that showed how the wall was and how you, you expected or to at least hide that, that wall with some plantings. I don't know what, I don't know what English ivy is, I don't know what juniper blue Pacific is, I don't know what porcupine grass is, and, you know, and I'm pretty good at.
You know, I got a second, second version this evening before I come to this meeting. The first, he had a first version, we gave him some, some advice back, and he modified and come to the second version, and he doesn't have the three-D.
The other thing I, the other thing that I mentioned at that time was, there was talk about abreviate, there was a bunch of different things that were thrown out. And when we started talking about plantings between you and the butter, which would be the mains, I had, I know that's this here. But I had, but I had suggested that that determination should not be made by us, that you and the main should have a discussion to find out what's appealing to them.
Absolutely.
Because I, I'm not looking at that every single day.
Absolutely.
And they need to decide if they're gonna be happy with what's, with what they're looking at.
This is simply a problem.
Or, let me rephrase, not happy, but at least can live with it.
We need to work with them, sure.
This is, this can all up for discussion. Anything that, you know, it's not, there's nothing that we can't develop on there to make it look pretty, especially with the abrevieties and the, and the English ivy that we talked about.
And also, you see, he puts those trees on the side. It's really on our neighbor's property. So we definitely need to work with them, you know. And this is just, I already gave this feedback to the landscaper.
What, Jim, really what's driving this, of course, is the topography of the land, but also the, I assume, Mr. Fair, maybe you can help me out, is the number of bedrooms in the house, which would determine the size of the leaching field and the needs for the septic system. Four-bedroom home?
Three.
Yep. Three?
Three only. Because of the size, we, we can't get a four. We already tried all the possibilities, you know, to have the, the systems small and try to lower the retaining wall. So we really hope to get the same results. But it's so hard, so many, so many restrictions.
Yeah. Part of what I, and again, it's not so much, this more or less highlights what we're gonna be facing as a, as a community going forward, you know, as we're pretty much built out as a community, and all that's left is wetlands or ledge. And again, as I stated before, there's a reason this was the last lot that was developed, you know, because of the topography and...
I don't have enough, I don't have enough, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I don't have enough experience. Even by now, with this experience, I would never, never try, you know, anything like this in my life. Just, just, you know, didn't understand all the issues.
But to my point, what I'm trying to get to is, and something that we need to address, you know, in short order, is, and again, maybe Martin can help, or Jim can help, CPC can certainly help. I think Chris is here somewhere, so, the audience. You know, when it comes to these lots that are left, you know, people have a right to build if they can build and if the block can support it. But I don't think we have an obligation as a community to enhance the lot's capacity in order to build a bigger home, which results in everything being built up and out, as opposed to putting it as to what the land and what the topography calls for. I mean, this may be, the lot may be only called for a two-bedroom home, you know, with a reasonable look to the, to the property in keeping with the neighborhood. But you've become a flashpoint for what can happen and what is happening, what could happen in other, in other neighborhoods. And it's for us to react to this. And unfortunately, you know, we didn't have enough foresight to, to react to before. You get into the pickle, and the neighborhood get into the pickle here that we're in. You know, now we're trying to make the best of a bad situation. I understand you have an awful lot of money invested here in everything, never mind the wall, but I mean, the whole project. It's not Mr. Fair's fault, you know, it's not Mr. DeColer's fault, and it isn't necessarily your fault, other than you did give your word as to what the aesthetics were going to be, and you were unable to fulfill it. That being said, you didn't come back and inform the neighborhood and allow for public input as to what else could be done. I believe there's something else structured that could've been done that could've been more aesthetically pleasing. I see all sorts of walls all over the place, you know, holding back the land that again are more aesthetically pleasing than this in a residential neighborhood. So, so again, so going forward, I mean, I think what we need to address, and Martin, you can help us, and everybody's gotta collaborate, get together here in Town Hall, is for these types of sites that are left, we need to put some sort of restrictions on there if it's going to have an impact such as this on the neighborhood, where we shouldn't allow for excessive building, where the land can't handle it on its own topographically the way that it's designed and set up, you know. And what we've done is we've allowed you to really overbuild a septic system, and this is the result.
Yeah, actually, before we closed on the property, we got the septic approval. Otherwise, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, you know.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt. Because without it, the value isn't there. It isn't there. And then again, there's a reason why that lot wasn't developed for twenty-five, twenty-eight years. The market is such that maybe it supports it now, so long as you had the septic design to have a three-bedroom home when the property couldn't support it. Without building up a septic system above ground...
And we have to put it up so far into the back. We can't do it in the front. And also, you know, you know, regardless, we are stuck there. We couldn't build, the market was down. Only this year, we, you know, we can do it. So we have a hold for four years probably already. So we really have no options, and really trying to minimize our loss, our loss from the property and try to do something, you know.
And again, but your loss, your loss, you know, your loss is a temporary loss based upon a one-time investment. The loss to this neighborhood, the aesthetics of it, is permanent.
Sure.
And so that, you know, you're not gonna be able to get the value that you thought out of your one-time investment. What about the effects on the people in the neighborhood? And this is what we're, you know, pressing upon you and asking you to do the best you can to make a full-time, you know, a full commitment here to bring the value back, based upon what you initially said and promised.
Right, absolutely. We, we would like to try our best to work with the neighborhood, you know, try to do...
Unfortunately, you've got two feet, three inches, two feet, five inches, two feet, seven inches to the sidewalk to do something about to cover a seven-foot wall. You know, I don't know what works.
Mr. Foti?
I will say, you know, after the last meeting, you were probably smart not bringing your builder in because, I'm gonna be honest, I was insulted sitting with him in the same room as him.
His mother just had a stroke.
Well, you know, saying, you know...
No, I think what Mr. Foti says is better off not to go in.
Sorry for his mother.
Yeah, but one of the things that, that he had said was, you know, in the instance where he got his tires flattened and where his wall was, you know, where the wall was graffiti, that he felt victimized. And, you know, I turned around and told him how insulted I was because he may be victimized for the short term because he gets to walk away from the property at some point when it's sold. But the people who live in that neighborhood are more victimized because they have to live with it forever. And, and one of the questions was, can, can that thing be faced? And his quote was, absolutely not at our cost. So, I mean, you know, and he kept throwing up to his face, he did nothing wrong because we, you know, it's our fault that we don't have bylaws that discourage that type of, of a building, but, of a wall. But, you know, in fairness, and I think Mr. Lou is genuine, I don't think his intent was to do anything other than, than the right thing there. He may have hooked up with the wrong builder, but ultimately, he made a promise at that meeting, and I think he should, you know, I think he should do something to, to rectify that and, and stay to his word. He may never, he may, you know, he may walk out of here and tell me, screw you, it's not my problem, and that's fine. And he may never come here and build again. But I think as a, as a gentleman, he needs to, you know, he made, he looked in these people's faces and told them what he was gonna do, and is going back on his word. And to me, that's a little, a little discouraging.
What's the next step with this piece of it?
That's the landscaper's initial draft. This is the second version. We need to work with the neighbor. For you, Ramon, on the side, to the right-hand side neighbor, we need to discuss with them because that's already on their property. So how, you know, how, what, how, you know, will they work with us? Whether they will allow us to plan there, and what kind of plan they, you know, that they are going to allow us to, to do. The front, maybe you can tell them all the plant names.
The English ivy is planted in that buffer, that twenty-seven-inch buffer, and it grows up. It will eventually completely cover the wall. The ivy will grow up. And then the, the grass there, that's like a plant that would grow tall, skinny, small root, so it won't, shouldn't mess with the sidewalk. If you plant them up close to the wall. And then the junipers along the top, without having the fence there, those things would come along the top and would, they won't grow tall, so it won't make it, you know, it'll grow thick, stay low to the ground, and decorate the top of the wall. The abrevieties on the neighbor's side should create enough of a buffer that they would never even see the wall. That's the way it is in my house. When they, when they grow up, they tend to get bushy and then, and they grow very tall, fast. I mean, it takes a few years for they go up. That should hide the wall completely from that side. The English ivy will, it will cover it. It will be just a green thing. They stay green all year. Those leaves don't necessarily change color, they fall off. And then there's a, there could be abrevieties in the front too, but I guess they picked that other plant. I've never seen one. They said it grows taller, but it doesn't grow as tall as the abreviate in the front, so it won't go up above the junipers. And it would be all, all green all year for the whole wall.
The English ivy.
Yeah, but it's not a tree.
No, it's a plant that'll paint it all.
Did you mention something about trees in front too? You didn't mention?
No.
No, the, the English ivy here would go along the whole bottom. I think there's ninety-seven plants. And then where you see the porcupine grass is like a juniper, except, you know, like an abreviate, but it won't go as tall. So it won't, it'll grow maybe, you know, up to the top of the wall, and then the junipers will grow on the top of that. So the wall will be completely covered in green.
But as far as the spreading of that grass, I mean, the spreading into the sidewalk, I mean, you don't, you only have two, two and a half feet, two feet.
Right.
Two and a half feet. So, I mean, how tall can you get before it encroaches on the sidewalk?
Right. It was just something they talked about. We talked about abrevieties, but I just saw that tonight, so.
Gentlemen, I think what would be helpful is, we submitted an electronic version of this plan. I'm not really good in terms of visualizing what ivy or porcupine grass might look like. So taking those plants and putting them on this plan would be helpful to everyone in front of this table. It would also be helpful to the folks in the audience in terms of understanding how it looks. Because we just, when you see it from kind of the top looking down, it's not the same effect as looking at it face-on. So I apologize for the fact that visually, I just can't imagine what it would look like. And I think, again, it would be helpful to take those things and have your expert impose them on the front face of the wall, which would be very, very helpful to me. I apologize. There was also a question about the four-foot strip between the sidewalk and the street. That's town property. So the town has an opportunity to, in many subdivisions, there are trees planted in that four-foot buffer strip between the sidewalk and the, and the street. And the town, under the board's direction, certainly has an opportunity to improve that area to make it look more aesthetically pleasing, as it sees fit.
Generally, remember, Mr. Chairman, when generally the developers, you know, do the plantings, the town does not undertake the purchase of the trees when the developments are being built. I mean, some of these trees are pretty mature now that are up there, but...
And this will look a lot nicer too, when there's no fence up there. I mean, without having the fence, it will all, it will all be landscaped, the whole top of the wall.
By the way, thank you for the idea. And also, I forward the picture that you emailed me.
You did.
I forward it to the landscaper. I think he just doesn't have time to use that picture to mix into his design yet. And another thing, I like your idea very much. So if the town can allow us, you know, between the, the street and the sidewalk, that gap, if the town can allow us to plant something there, that would be a help, because we don't have space in front of the retaining wall. So as you see, very narrow there. So if you can allow us to plant something between the sidewalk and the street, that would help really a lot. Of course, we are responsible for planting. If I had, we can get a permit.
Generally, the plantings of the trees along the roadway and in between the sidewalk and, and the, and the street are leaf trees that, you know, drop their leaves, you know, in the fall and come back in the spring. So it's not gonna necessarily hide the wall, kill the entire year.
I don't disagree, though, that it would be more aesthetically pleasing to have some trees to break it up, to break it up. Yes, it is in the rest of the subdivision.
So if we can be allowed to plant there, of course, you know, for our first time, we would propose evergreen blocking kind of plants.
Evergreens? No. Typically, it'd be, like Mr. O'Leary just said, it would be, it would typically be leafy trees.
Similar to ones that are off, like the leaf fall.
I know. I know, but, but in that, well, once the English ivy is going to cover the wall, that is no longer a problem. Before that, yeah.
Part of, part of what needs to be done, I mean, you're proposing the ivy, and you're proposing the porcupine grass, or whatever it is, you know, and the junipers on the top, you know, that's an enhancement, that's better. But again, a regular lifetime, whether it be a maple tree or whatever is up there, you know, still just breaking up the, the wall also helps us aesthetically. To put in a, you know, an abreviate or an evergreen of some sort, it just grow too big and be out in the street and be into the sidewalk. It doesn't work.
That's true.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
Right, that's true.
Mr. Frisco?
Is the wall, this, where the wall ends, is that, that's as far as the wall is going? Is it running down the driveway?
No, there'll be another wall inside.
So it'll be running down this way?
This will taper down right here. It basically tapers down the driveway.
And that's it? It doesn't, there's no wall up all the way to, down the driveway? So that's just gonna be landscaped off, rounded?
A wall up closer to the house, holding steps up, coming away from the garage.
So the end of this wall is gonna take the corner down the driveway?
Yeah, that corner hasn't been done because we are waiting for the gas pipe to be installed. And then we need to take care of that, yeah.
How far down?
I think original design stops somewhere like where the last piece. But I was already talking to the builder and trying to make that corner better. We are even thinking, you know, based on the grid and thinking about different ideas of, you know, how to stop it or how to turn or somehow we want to make that now look nice, at least consistent. So after the gas pipe, the rest of the, I mean, the, the wall, the wall needs to be consistent. Yeah, right now, it's like going down step by step.
Right now, it looks unfinished.
Yeah, 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 exactly. Yeah, we want to, we want to finish it as, as better as possible, put it that way. And we will work with the landscaper together for that end.
But what was the original plan on that side, to go the full length?
No, the original plan, I think it stops right there without, without a round corner or something.
Oh, just to step down, as you see it. And then, then burn it down with, with grass and...
Make it matters worse.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So what it is, it's done there.
I don't know what I'm hearing now.
Now it's gonna make a turn?
Well, he doesn't know yet. But my guess is that the builder has, also has a vested interest in this project. Am I correct?
Yeah.
And as he has a vested interest, meaning everything you agree to, he has to kind of step up and partially pay for it too.
Now, we collaborate with you. Trust me, we, we all want to, you know, do our best to, you know, to everybody to be happy. Other side, we have really the same goal. I mean, if it's ugly, how can we sell it?
First of all, I want to congratulate you and thank you for coming this evening, because this isn't an easy, this isn't an easy venue for somebody in your position. However, you know, so thank you for that. No, thank you for what you've done, but thank you for coming.
Thank you for all of your help.
But really, you know, the step down, and I'm not helping you market your property, but it doesn't work. It doesn't work aesthetically for the neighborhood again, and certainly doesn't do anything to enhance your property if it doesn't take the corner and finish it off down there, but...
Any other board members?
Yeah, well, you know, I think the thing is disgusting to begin with. And if I had my druthers, I'd have it removed. But obviously, the gentleman has followed the rules. And from a legal point of view, it's not clear, at least to me at this point, that much can be done. So we're in a situation where ultimate cooperation, Mr. Lee, in terms of mitigating the issue, is, should be done post haste. Mr. Bellicanes has suggested that you get your land architect to kind of superimpose a draw, you know, what this thing is gonna look like to cover the wall.
Sure.
And I gather now, if I clearly heard you right, that from the top of the wall, moving inland, the soil is gonna be tapered up to height above the wall by a couple of feet.
Right.
And there'll be plantings in that area on the slope of some sort. And then at the top level, a lawn, I gather. So that's, so I did hear that right?
Yeah.
And... Right now, the wall isn't finished at the end here, and it's kind of hard to envision. Is that just gonna slope off, or is it gonna go around a corner? What's happening there?
No, he wants to have a landscaper look at it.
No.
No, it's finished, he said.
That's the finished product.
That's the finished product.
There's, there's, there's other blocks. There's finishing blocks, half-blocks that will go in there where they come down. It won't, it won't just be...
That's what I'm trying to envision. But is it, does... But is it, does, does the wall take a bend as part of the finish?
Not on the current plan.
Not on the current plan.
It wasn't on the approved plan, but they're trying to figure out to get it to slope and come around the corner is to give it, to make it.
I mean, right now, this is, the wall is disgusting and the end of it is even worse.
Yeah, absolutely. So other side, we are waiting.
So I would expect that there had to be some rounding or something similar to what's on the other end.
We are waiting for the gas company to connect the pipeline there, I mean, the gas pad there. After that, we are going to work with the landscaper to finish that.
There must be a draw, isn't there a drawing of how the wall's going to be finished?
Well, the original plan that was approved, it just comes to the end and tapers down.
Tapers down like this.
Well, that's not tapering to me that.
No, they would finish it the way it was, just putting the end caps on.
End caps on, yeah. On the staircase on the end.
Right.
Mr. Frisco?
Mr. Look, Mr. What, I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. I, I know we have a lot of residents here tonight that probably want to ask maybe some of the same questions, so if it's okay, Mr. Delaney, I'll just take the liberty to ask the questions to kind of move this along. I just want to ask you one more time on behalf of the residents at North Reading, especially the Bishop's Way people, would you give some more reconsideration to making an investment to reface that wall with some kind of a brick face? Would you consider doing that?
We discussed about this, maybe you can, you can talk about that better than me.
The, what we talked about was a brick face and stucco. There used to be a company called New England Brick Face and Stucco around here that did a lot of houses. The biggest problem, I owned a company that actually did that kind of work many years ago, probably twenty years ago. It doesn't last. It will chip. That, it's just mortar, it's not concrete. It won't stand up to the salt that's coming down the street and from the snow and the shoveling, it will just disintegrate and that stuff will fall off. It's with, the wall's been curved to try to make it a little more aesthetically pleasing. It was just a slight curve, so it wasn't so straight. So it's not a perfectly straight wall, so that would make it even more difficult. The, the fact that it's a, where the septic tank is right behind the wall, like we were going to take, take a couple of courses off and put smaller block on the top part, but there's no way to, to go into the septic tank to secure it. You need matting that goes into the ground that secures to the concrete, so it won't come off. And you can't do that because that's where the tank is and there's a forty mil thick plastic barrier. So any other kind of structure up there is going to run the risk of leaking the septic tank, you know, it'll break out and go onto the sidewalk. So that's why they said we had to use the thick blocks. But they mainly did buy the ones with the decorative front, so that was, there's no way to go in and actually make that thing different without undermining the structure of the septic tank and that's the problem, otherwise it would have been done.
Mr. Frisco?
That's fine. I'm not going to debate you on your response, but getting to the wall, since we have to live with it. It's recon walls, I think you used, correct, to purchase the wall from them?
It's very close to here.
The name of the company? The wall manufacturer?
Yeah.
In the.
Shea.
Shea Concrete, right. If you go to the website, they actually have, they, the website lists painting, they also talk about sealing the wall and they're putting anti-graffiti sealant on it. Would you be willing to at least consider those options? Because we don't want any graffiti in our neighborhood. And if it happens again, you know, you won't be there, you're going to have it over to a seller and that poor seller's going to have to live with that, that wall. If you could seal it so it has an anti-graffiti covering on it and maybe even potentially a softer earth tone color or something to it, would you at least give that some consideration?
Sure, actually, you know, I myself, with the builder, spent three hours trying to get rid of that thing. It was so hard. But luckily, George found a contractor who came, really spent really not much time and they got rid of it. So at least that's one.
Right.
You know, one piece of information very useful in case in the future, you know, when it happens again, so at least we know a way of getting rid of that.
No, but, but Mr. Frisco is asking something else.
I know, I know.
You don't want to be in that situation again, so.
Absolutely.
Let me finish. You said absolutely, you'll, you'll do what he suggested?
Absolutely, we will, we will take the recommendation and look into that. If that's a feasible alternative, sure, of course. I mean, as I said, we would like to collaborate with everybody really to, you know, to improve. And that's, that's a help for ourselves.
Sherman Williams does make some paint that is designed for that wall. I would like you to at least consider it as an option.
By the way, the front surface is pretty rough.
It's an option. But the anti, the anti, sealing it and the anti-graffiti, I think, would be helpful to the residents in the event, in the future incident. In regards to going forward from here, we can't put this subject back on the board of selectmen agenda. We have other business to move on to. We'd like to work out some kind of a way so we can communicate with you in regards to these landscape renderings, especially the abutters that have to live with it. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if you have a suggestion on how we, actually going forward, but I, I think it's at a time now where we could work this out tonight, how the communication may be happen between the builder and the abutters rather than here in the boardroom.
I think you should submit his landscape design to the town administrator. He can schedule a time to meet with representatives from the community, from Bishop's Way. To discuss what they, we, we shouldn't be in a position where we're mitigating or just being an arbitrator of this. I think you need to go back to your neighbors who you promised one thing and did something else. Try to do your best to rectify that situation. Mr. Fode?
Mr. Chair, what happens in the situation where, I mean, this is a situation where no one's going to, you know, there's no winner in this.
No one's going to be, right.
Right, but I, I, you know, you know, I think we owe it to, to the homeowners there that, you know, we have to see that there's follow through on this. And I'm concerned that, and no disrespect, because I don't know either you gentlemen all that well, but I don't know how much follow up is going to be on, on the part of them and making sure that the residents have a say in what, what goes on there and, not that they have to, but I think as good a day as they, they deserve that. I'm just concerned that, that's, you know, their concerns are going to fall on deaf ears.
Can I say something?
Create.
Go ahead.
Can I get the neighbor's phone number? For example, the neighbor, you know, to our right-hand side, better retaining wall, because my next, next step action is to discuss with them, bring the landscaper here and directly sit down with them, you know, to design that part of the.
I think that's good. I think you need the neighbor to the left, neighbor to the right and a neighbor across the street as a minimum who you should be meeting with. It's my suggestion.
So if we have those contact information, I can call for such a meeting.
I believe all.
The neighbor, the neighbor, if you're standing at the front door of your home, the neighbor to your left is to your left. Right there, there's the family, you know? Situated exactly where they're situated in your neighborhood.
So I think by the end of today, I want to get all of those phone numbers, so I can arrange such a meeting when I call the landscaper.
Sure, they'll be happy to stay around and make sure they get all your information and you got this.
Right, okay.
Board members?
Anyone from the Bishop's Way neighborhood would like to get up and speak? You can have a seat for now. If you want to sit here, you may have to get back up in a hurry.
Hey, I'll, can I just say something for you? Sure you can. On 114, David Mayne, Bishop's Way, on, on 114, the state refaced a wall on 114 going towards Middleton. The state did. For the last four years, that wall's fine. I drive that route every day. There's, there's no stones dropping, there's no rocks falling, there's no cement cracking. It's fine. I think we should forget all about this, trees and the ivy and do what you said you were going to do. Make the wall like the neighborhood. That's what I think you should do.
Can I, can I respond?
Nope, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to just revisit the issue about the height of the wall. And I am not a building inspector, but I really feel like I need to disagree with the way Mr. DeColer sort of interpreted, interprets the grade. Maybe he can get back up and explain it to me. But it would be amazing to me to think that I'm standing here on a sidewalk, the wall is literally right here and that the grade changes by piling mulch against the bottom of the wall. Why not make the wall another two feet taller and just, and I'll take, we can take shovels, we'll throw mulch against the wall and it'll slope down like this and we'll measure the, we'll measure the grade being the top of the, the largest piece of bark and the mulch. How can the sidewalk not be the existing grade when the wall is from me to this podium away? That I would really like to know. Because when, I originally sort of thought of the height of the wall and I, I'm almost six feet tall and I, and I didn't even have to go on, on his property to measure it because I stood on my tiptoes and my fingers still didn't reach the top of the wall. So for the grade to change, because we'll pile some mulch right down here, I find to be not a reasonable definition of what a grade is. Educate me if I'm wrong.
Mr. DeColer? Mr. May, wait a second. Mr. May? Mr. May, please have a seat. Mr. DeColer, can you come up and address that?
The finished grade is to the base of the wall. It's done all the time. It's done on farmer's porches, it's done on steps where you have to be thirty inches below and you don't need a railing all the way around your farmer's porch. Contractors will grade up to meet that twenty-nine inches to eliminate putting the railing. It's not much of a pitch, there's two feet there and with the loom and the bark mulch, they'll go right to that bottom of that first thing. That's considered the finished grade at the very base of the wall.
Shouldn't it be to the loom because bark mulch is removable? I mean, bark mulch could, you know, the next owner can decide that they don't want bark mulch.
Well, you know, and the other point is, I'm prepared to defend it in court, but the setback doesn't apply. So if the, if the wall is seven-six, eight feet, it's still okay. Thank you.
Do you care if you follow up? I'll allow, I'll allow you to have a follow up.
Oh, sure. Yeah, that, I.
I'm sorry.
Alan McCray, 44 Kings Row. Yeah, I just, I find that kind of amazing. And, and I have to say that when he's talking about farmer's porches and so forth, I really don't think the farmer's porch is two feet off the sidewalk. And so in this case, it seems to me that a sidewalk is a grade. And unless he can multitask, he doesn't hear a word that I'm saying, so anyways, that's my comment to you.
Mr. May?
The wall ends on our property. And the grade coming from his land is, again, like I had explained, David Mayne, Bishop's Way, and I explained that the dirt, grass, rocks, that's coming right on our property. And we haven't had anybody come to our house to say, this is what we're going to do to stop when it rains, degrade, wash it onto our property. No one has yet to, you know, address that issue.
This picture, a reference here? At the very end, here's where you're talking about, it's washing in?
Yes, yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about. But it's coming right, now, we have a window on our foundation and it's coming.
Washing into it.
Wash, well, it's not, but it's, it's in that direction. We have our basement windows right there. And no one has yet, you know, come to address that. And that's one of our concerns.
To help Mr. Lou, when he meets with you, is going to add that to the list of things he needs to address, stop that from happening. You may want to take a note of that, Mr. Lou.
I will work with you. I will work with you. We will make sure, either we have a swale or something, take the water to the back of their friends, we will make sure.
He needs to come to the microphone, knowing that home can hear him.
Charlie Rinaldi, 7 Bishop's Way. Just approached the grade of mulch. I can't imagine that mulch is holding itself up for two feet. It's going to fall down onto the sidewalk. There's nothing to hold it there. What, what's to retain the mulch from falling into the sidewalk, which is going to be snowed on? It's going to have snow pushing up against it. It's going to fall down, it's going to decompose, it's going to be, you know, I just don't, can't imagine something up against a sidewalk having a finished grade without the finished grade being the sidewalk since it's right there. A few pieces of information about this wall. I've been on the recon walls website. They have multiple choices. They just don't offer one wall, they just don't. They're an international company. They offer much more pleasing walls, but I can't imagine they have one retaining wall for septic systems or one retaining wall.
I agree with you, I don't credit the owner's answer to my question concerning this is the only wall. I don't find that believable.
It's just, it's just not believable. Even their own website says retaining walls should enhance the aesthetics of the natural surroundings and add value to the property. We have lost value to our surrounding properties. I'm all for, you know, buying property, selling a house, the great American dream, but when you hurt people around you and their land values and their ability to enjoy their property, that's, that's a big issue. And I, I walk out of my house every day. I actually wake up every morning, I look out my window to make sure there's not more graffiti. I just heard that the same exact graffiti message was written at IRP on the tennis courts in May. The exact same message. So this is, the graffiti will happen again on this wall and I hate that. I hate it. We just saw from a phone that English ivy will be eaten by deers, they'll eat it all up. We have lots of deers in our neighborhood, lots. They live in my backwoods, they live in the woods where this house now is. I don't know where they've gone to, but they will, the deer will come, they eat my plants, they eat our, the neighbor's plants. I had to replace bushes myself. So if the ivy's going to be put up and just be, be devoured during the winter time, what happens then? What's the replacement? I do think this wall could have been done better. Would it cost more money? I think it would absolutely cost more money. But you're selling a house and you need a buyer for that house. And the amount of traffic that comes down our street, like drives down and turns around, slowly up and down, and I'm watching and I'm worried about someone doing something. I'm watching your property and I'm watching to make sure no one's doing something. I watch when cars go late at night, what's that car doing there? Are they doing something? I don't want to be the watch guard for your property. I want, I would rather this go much better, that this wall, obviously you didn't want this high wall for the septic system, but it's there and it could have been materialized better than the way it's showing. It's, it's showing to us and the neighborhood that it was done as economically as possible without regards for everyone around you. And that hurts. And that hurts us financially when we go to sell our properties. Every day I walk out my door for the next thirty years, I'm paying my mortgage on time, I'm paying my property taxes on time, I'm paying it all in time. And this is what I'm looking at when I walk out my door. It could have been done better. And I know it could have been done better because I've traveled the neighborhood, I've traveled Middleton. It's done better everywhere, it's done better. Do I want to see marble on there? Absolutely not. But it, it could have been done better. Economically, that's all I come, I come back to, is that this is economics. I just don't know how the foliage is going to cover such a large extent of wall. I want it to work. If, if that's going to be our last solution, do I want it to work? Absolutely, but I, I will be there. Our neighbors will be there when it doesn't, if it doesn't. We will still be there. And even ivy on a, I don't know how long the sidewalk goes, but it just, it rises up. You see yards and trees and wall, yards and trees. It's. It's overwhelming for us. If there's no top unit placed on top, what's locking it in? Honestly, that wall wobbles. What's locking it in for safety, for it not to topple over?
What about when people are using their septic system?
Again, you bought a piece of property, you built a house, it was supposed to be this great thing, but it's not so great for us when you leave. And I'd like to see, I would like to see a lot of cooperation happen and I'm sorry if that's going to cost money, but you're also going to see it cost money in your end when you go to sell this house. The amount of people in the neighborhood, in the town, they're like, what is, what's that? What is that? It's something to consider that the price you perhaps want doesn't warrant what's there. Some meanings from the note were the septic's to be completed at a later date, the jagged eggs to be completed at a later date. What does later date mean? Are there problems with financing where things are being pushed off or is it just waiting for stages to happen, I guess? I guess I would like to understand what a later date means. I called Recon Walls today and I actually asked them. I go, do you make a product that we go reface the wall? And they said, no, we do not. But they do make a lot more product than the one at Six Bishop's Way. Thank you.
Mr. May?
Hi, Deputy May, Eight Bishop's Way. Originally three years ago, we didn't meet with Mr. Lou. I've met Mr. Lou in the past and his wife and, you know, from him being at the property. But three years ago, who shook our hands and agreed to the wall on Old Coach because it's cement with the stone in the front. I won't keep going over that, but, and just like 62 and 114, like my husband said, but in going into the developments, it's cement, like if you look in the back, it's just cement with the stone in the front. But I shook hands with Mr. Kling. Is that his name? Mr. Kling. Me and my husband, the Powys, the people that used to live in Jerry Lynn's house and I think the Denapolis were there. We shook our hands with him who said, you know, he would do all that, but that's by the wayside. Obviously he lied. But also on, I think the CPC said, we have a house that's far back. I don't know if it's like definite or I just want to see if like, because if they're going to be spending the money all on this, they had promised, like it was a consideration, I don't know what the wording is, a consideration that they put a fence and trees back there by the house. That was listed on the community planning commission thing, a fence and a tree. I don't know if it was like something he has to do or if he does this-
Yeah, condition of approval?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Is it, is that something he has to do or if he spends the money-
Unless it gets modified by the planning commission.
Okay.
It's a condition, yeah. I know we have a chair of Mr. Hayden, CBC here. I don't know if you know that off the top yet.
The order of conditions, 1993, so, and I don't know, I don't know exactly what they are. I haven't reviewed them all.
Okay. Chris, what are you, get the high side from the cable guy.
I, I, you know, talking about trees in the front of the property, the trees in, in 93, the way the planning board was doing it was putting street trees in that four-foot buffer between the street and the sidewalk and I believe they were putting in a root guard so it wouldn't lift, as the trees got very large, they wouldn't lift the street. There may not have been any tree put there. It probably would have been one tree in front of that yard if it had been completed. But because it was unbuildable at the time-
Just left it there.
-they left it there because there was trees on the lot. The lot was never, was never cut. So, I mean, if, if they, you know, I think it's Mr. Lou. If, if he's going to put some trees there, he should, there, there's a list of trees that we approve as street trees and he can come down to the planning board and they can get the list for him and then he could pick one of those trees and as long as he puts it in properly and, you know, it lives because those trees don't always live the first year. You know, normally when we do a subdivision or any of this, we bond trees separately and once they're planted, they're reviewed a year after to see if they're still alive. And if they're not, they get replaced and we hold the bond until they're, they're grown, they're alive for a year and then they usually continue on. So, but yeah, I, I have not yet reviewed all of the order of conditions. You know, street, you know, trees on their property, that's something that's usually up to the property owner. We don't, we don't dictate that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Have the woman in the back, Mr. May?
I just have one quick question. Just one quick thing. We continue to, we need the board to stay with us because they already went back on their word once. They went back on their word once and this is why we're here. So I don't want the board just to stay away from this. I want you guys involved because I don't trust or believe anything that they say.
Carrie Denapoli, Four Bishop's Way. If you face the property, I'm to the left. Just, I want to just make sure I understand and know what my rights are as a property owner abutting the piece of, the wall. Who is going to follow up once these plantings are put in place if they don't survive? Is that then up to the new property owner and then we're back facing the same situation again?
I would think you're right.
Just to piggyback on what Dave said, I'm sorry, Mr. Lou, but I honestly do not trust you and I know you said that you would work with us, but is there any way we can get that in writing? And my third thought, hearing all this and you said that you would never do this again, this investment that you made, clearly shows that this is a one-shot deal. You're in, you're out. You're going to put some plants in and then you're going to drive your truck down Bishop's Way and not look back once you get your check. That to me is unacceptable.
Okay.
So I, if we could just address those issues, like what are my rights and how do we get this in writing? We did the handshake thing, that didn't work. I was there. And it is upsetting. It's an ugly wall and it's not aesthetically pleasing as, as has been said so many times. I'm, you know, I'm not going to beat a dead horse. What do we do? I don't think the plantings are going to solve the problem. Those plantings will die. We all know, we don't plant things on our sidewalks because we know, living in New England, the snow, the salt, we lose our, we lose our mailboxes. I know I do every winter. So what do we do from here? What do, do we need something in writing? Can we hold money? Like you mentioned, the bond, what, what happens? I don't know, I mean, this is, I know new for all of us, new territory. Is this it? I mean, and then if the board steps away, then what? Then what, what are we left with? Then is it, we still retain a legal counsel to find him and Mr. Kling and-
Unfortunately, I think that's the option that you're left with, although I'm not happy about it. It appears as though he got the necessary approvals from the various departments within the town. So this board doesn't have much authority, if any, to force him to do anything. So I think he has an understanding sitting here tonight that this board is very unhappy with what damage he did to that particular neighborhood. It seems like to me, not an overwhelming willingness to, to work with the neighborhood either. So I think your only option is to maybe get legal counsel and see if any action is against him, the builder, whomever. That's the way, I don't know if board members think differently than I do, but see that we have much at this point, unfortunately.
Is that, do you all agree?
I think the, the issue of plantings, typically the planning commission requires a bond when there's a subdivision, so the fact that this is not part of a subdivision process, typically there's not a bond involved. The, the plantings are a concern. The ivy is hardy and I can assure you it'll go 20 feet tall in a few years. The arborvitae is less so. They're subject to breakage. I think there was a comment that I saw that with heavy snow loads, they can and they will break and I can attest to the fact that that does happen. So if that happens four or five years down the road, I'm not really sure what the, what the alternatives would be to that, other than the existing property owner would be, would want to replace them for aesthetic reasons. But the, the ivy itself is hardy stuff.
And again, for the mains property, whatever plantings are going to take place, become the property of the mains and the responsibility, you know? He's assumed some responsibility to do some plantings, put it's all on your, their property. So choose wisely as far as, you know, what species is going to stand up to what we're used to here.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions. Mr. Rinaldi?
Hi, Dave Rinaldi, Seven Bishop's Way. I just had a couple of comments. My first comment was again about the height of the wall and how it was mentioned that you just magically throw some dirt up against the wall and then all of a sudden it becomes the correct height and, and also the, you know, the speaking of defending oneself in court, that just might happen. The second thing is that the, these gentlemen over here talked about they can't refinish this wall because the snow, the weather, the salt, the rain will deteriorate it. What is it going to do to plants? What's the snow, what's the salt going to do to plants? They're going to die. And, you know, we spoke about Brickmaster and all these other fancy companies. I would like to remind people, there's people out there called masons who actually do this for a living. They work with stone, they work with stucco, they work with concrete. So my suggestion would be first and foremost to resurface that wall and not lend it just to throw some vines up there and then see what happens. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's David Ferreira. I'm a North Reading resident of all of three months. I live at Seven Castle Road. I haven't met the majority of the room here. My wife has forwarded me the emails, so I'm a little bit familiar with it. A little background about me, I, last 20 years, I've been a general contractor and a real estate developer for various companies, familiar with these walls. I've also had the, in my prior town, I've also had the pleasure of sitting on that side of the table.
Pleasure, huh? That's why you moved?
It moved out of town.
And as a real estate developer, I also had the pleasure on this side of the table getting projects that the GOMA companies that I worked for were getting done in various towns. That said, to Mr. Delaney's point about the wall, there are other walls that could be used for this. There are, and you can Google this, it's GeoGrid walls and stratoslope walls. They, I did, I'm not, I didn't see the drawings, I'm not really familiar where the septic goes at the end of the day, but the GeoGrid does, you know, does give a certain structural stability that, and the benefit of, of a stratoslope wall or these GeoGrid walls is that they're not faced with stone, they're rather it's a wire mesh that you have plantings in and at the end of the day, when it's fully grown, it looks like a grassy knoll. To the, to the prior gentleman's point about masons, we've also done facing the walls, what you do is you have a mason come in and you do a little bit of a steel shelf at every course. It's about a one or two inch shelf and you face it with, with stone. I've driven around this town in the last three months, I've seen walls, certainly not this high, but generally high, you know, four or five feet that are very attractive, nice field stone work. So again, I, I just offer up, there's other options that can be entertained. I don't know where it's going, but I wanted to at least let everybody know that, you know, this isn't the only wall that could have been constructed here.
I appreciate you coming up and stating that. I didn't think that was the only wall that could be placed out there. I would like to hear from Mr. Lou. Now, you, you just heard from a gentleman who does this day in and day out. He's offered you an alternative solution other than plantings that I don't think will ever survive out there. You may get a year or so. So I, I'd like to hear from you as to whether or not you will investigate and pursue that option. Can you come up to this microphone, please?
Sir, I will discuss with the builder and look into different alternatives and see if there's anything feasible.
No, you, you already heard there's something that's feasible. It's whether or not you have a willingness, along with your partners in this project, who are going to profit something out of it, to pursue that option, which will be more aesthetically pleasing for that, the neighborhood. It's not your neighborhood, you're gone as soon as that place sells, all right? I would put that as your number one priority, is to look into that and pursue that option.
Yeah, yeah.
You will do that.
We will, we will look at alternatives. So I, I do want to mention that when I say feasibility, it has to be feasible, not only technical, but also has to be financial.
You took the, you took-
Or otherwise.
You took the least cost alternative for you to begin with. It's costing you more now as a result. One way or the other, it's costing you more.
So let me put it this way. If in this room or from this town, if somebody can take this, I take a loose. We can discuss about that number. If somebody is willing, I, I take a loose, I, I can get out. If somebody had a better idea, like this builder friend who can take this project on, I would like to negotiate that because I'm not making any money. If I, if I can have some profit-
That's probably the second thing that's come out of your mouth that I don't believe either, but in any of it, you're not taking a loss at this point, but I think you should investigate and I would want that to be number one. My opinion is number one priority is to reface that wall. Your plantings are not going to survive out there. I don't think you have enough room for all the plantings you want to do. And then you've got to deal with the mains on the other side in terms of what you're going to do to rectify their issue, what you run off from your property as well.
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
By the way, I, I want to respond to one, I don't remember who said that, saying the builder, Mr. Kling, promised to do whatever with walls and I want to make a comment. We wanted to build a better wall. We wanted that.
Okay. I've heard enough regarding you wanting to build, I have.
We can't. We don't have enough space.
I, I-
We can't.
I, I, well, Mr. Kling's not here and quite honestly, I've heard enough, I think the neighborhood has heard enough about you wanting to build a better wall. You would have done it. You, you chose to go a route that saved money. Okay? Thank you. Does anyone else in the neighborhood like to? Well, you're not from the neighborhood, but come on up.
Stephanie Kiefer from Smolik and Vaughn on behalf of several of the neighbors in the neighborhood. I think a lot of the points that have been raised this evening, I may be echoing them somewhat, but I just want to underscore the importance of this. The, the builder, I, I'm not disqualifying that he's sorry that he's here for this, but we've seen a few instances in significant ways in which what he said is going to happen has not happened. One of them is the hand, or with the builder, is, is the handshake agreement in terms of what that wall is going to look like. Another instance is the plantings and I, I brought this up to the selectmen at the last meeting, the order of conditions, I have a copy of it today if you want to see, but it clearly states on the order of conditions on the site between six and eight, there is, there's a condition that the conservation commission imposed requiring, I believe it's eight trees to be there. Now we're hearing this evening that what he did was he put the wall right on the property boundary and so any trees that could be now done are going to have to be at the cooperation of the mains.
You, you have that?
I, I do have that, yeah. And because I'm in term, it's a tactic. It's special condition three from the last page of the order of conditions that was recorded at the registry of deeds. And as far as I can tell, there's been no, going back to the conservation commission to submit revised plan saying, we accidentally, what we did in the field isn't in accordance with the plan we submitted to you. And so I, I pick up on Mr. Fode's comment and I urge- And so I pick up on Mr. Fode's comment and I urge the selectmen to, I understand that this isn't your only job, obviously, but I urge you to try to work together with the neighborhood. It was put to the neighbors, work with the town on this, and that's exactly what these neighbors have tried to do, and it would just be a shame if the town said, we don't think we can do anything more. And on that note, in terms of the town and the various boards, I think there are things that can be done and can be looked at, and I, as I pointed out just now, the Conservation Commission, I don't think that what's required has been done. I still have concerns about the septic system and the revised plans on that. As I read the local Board of Health regulations, the maximum length of the distribution line is to be 100 feet. When I look at the plans, I think that line looks like it's more like 110 and a half or 120 feet, in part because when they were in the field, they hit the ledge and so they moved the soil absorption system, which was going to be 27 feet from this property line, closer, so now it's only 12 feet. And so they, it no longer could be gravity fed, so they put it in the pumping changer chamber, but you also have that distribution line that I, that I read to exceed the maximum line under the local Board of Health, not Title V regulations, but the local regulations. Similarly, and I think I'd raised this the other week, I see that there's concerns in terms of how well the septic system is going to work. Title V, Title V regs and also echoed in the policies of the guidelines underneath that talk about if you're gonna have an impermeable barrier, it should be at least 10 feet away from the soil absorption system. Here, it's probably within five feet of the trenches. If you look at the plans that were submitted to the Board of Health, it's much closer than the minimum. Similarly, with the slope, I don't know if it's a three to one slope that's put out in the regulations of Title V, but again, there, it requires a distance kind of between the system where the slope is, and there is, there is some flexibility within the guidelines, but I'm not certain that, that adheres to that. Similarly, getting back to the poor mains, the wall right now doesn't go the full length back, and I hear that it's gonna go farther back, but Title V talks about that they should be designing swales to make certain that there's not some sort of problem that they're gonna have, that the mains are now gonna have a water problem because the property next door is so darn high. I haven't seen any of that on the plans. So I raise these, not to raise additional issues, but to say two things. One, the proposal that the builder is going to put up some veg, is going to build up two feet from the sidewalk with, with loam and peat and whatnot, which, as has been pointed out this evening, very likely will erode onto the sidewalk, so who's responsible for cleaning that up? You know, unfortunately, the town, probably. And, and secondly, they're gonna put vegetation, no landscape architect came this evening, and I think very good points have been made that there's a lot of deer in this neighborhood, and any vegetation would need to be deer resistant. And then what I heard this evening also is that there's gonna be changes to the wall. I still haven't heard anything that there's gonna be new plans submitted to anybody, to Board of Health, to the building inspector. At some point, that retaining wall, if you look at the plans, the soil absorption system is only so wide. That retaining wall is continuing to go, so are they going to continue to claim that they get an exemption under Title V because it's required, even though it's remote from the location of the soil absorption system? It's now just part of what they want the aesthetic to look like? I, I raise all these points and I ask the board, please, don't step away from it yet this evening. Don't put the neighbors in a position of having to decide this evening, do we have to go ourselves to court? I think the neighbors want to work with the owner and they want to work with the town and they want to get a resolution, and what I would ask of the board this evening is to make it very clear and ask the owner, what is he going to look into? And get that list, a very defined list, and say, when are you gonna have it done by? And, and who does he need to talk to? Does, does he need to submit a proposal from the landscape if that's the angle he's going? Does he need to talk to someone that can actually do refacing and get a quote, get a couple quotes? I hear that it's too expensive, but I haven't heard him say that he's actually gotten a quote, usually quotes are free.
Well, actually, what he first said was, there wasn't an option to reface it, so that's what I had heard.
Pardon me?
What I heard was, there was no option because the brick master wouldn't work because it would just fall off, so I, I don't think he's gotten any quote. So now we're hearing from Mr. Ferreira that there is an option.
Right, right, exactly, but, but, right before I came up, I believe I heard him say that he would be willing to explore it. So I, I think that there's a, just willing to explore versus, I'm going to go to the right people and take a look at this. And then maybe the third thing is, maybe Mr. Osgood, the engineer, who presumably designed this wall, has, has something to comment upon the need for its height or whether, whether it's, whether that height is indeed needed or whether or not he's aware of anything that can make it more aesthetically pleasing, a brick master sort of overlay. And in terms of whether or not it lasts, I think that there are commitments that the owner could do, such as agree that a condition within the deed is that the wall has to be maintained by the new owner. You know, again, it's, I think that this problem requires a little bit of creative thinking on everyone's behalf, and I just want to underscore though that the neighbors have been asked to approach the town with their problems, and I think it would just be a huge injustice if the town said, we don't know what to do, and work, work it out amongst yourselves. We're not there yet, and maybe it will be there, and I hope that it is there, but it's not there yet, so on their behalf, I just ask for your continued involvement.
Thank you. Mr. Masary?
This is a question for the building inspector. I look at this and anybody with any sense would measure the wall from the level of the sidewalk, so if we do that, then in some instances, it's almost a half a block above the grade. My question is, if the wall was seven and a half feet tall, is it still permissible? I'm trying to understand that.
The setbacks do not...
Could you explain that a little better to me? I'm not sure I understand the setback.
Do you want me to get into it? I mean, this, this could be a court case where every one of you are gonna be in court, town council is gonna be defending it.
I'm just, I'm just...
A case of interpreting, it's only my loss.
I'm not, I'm trying to understand the language, okay? So you just referred to setback. I'm trying to understand what that means.
The setback in this area is 50 feet. So if you take the opinion of council, that wall would have to be 50 feet back from the property line, if it was over seven feet.
Okay, now I get it. That's what I was missing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Alan Duprey, 44 Kings Row. One last comment about the height of the wall and the mulch is, I'd like to ask Mr. Decola, is there a limit to how much mulch you could add to make the wall some infinite or some particular height? Could you have three feet of mulch? Is there a standard of how much mulch you can have to therefore make the wall be theoretically smaller?
Mr. Decola, do you care to answer?
There's no limit. I mean, obviously, gravity's gonna tell how far you can pile it up, I mean, that's up to the moment.
Anyone else? Board members?
Mr. Lou, do you have any figure in mind as to how much more you're willing to or can afford to invest to address the wall? I mean, plantings are certainly less costly than refacing, but do you have any idea as to where you think you might end up and be willing to? Because I think that helps quantify how much in the way of discussions are gonna take place and what do we have to work with. I mean, obviously, you want to minimize your costs, the economies of scale is, you know, the less I have to do, the less it costs me, the more I can make, hopefully satisfy people, but it doesn't appear as though people are going to be satisfied unless you change the appearance of the wall. Is that economically feasible for you?
So first of all, I need to get...
Mr. Lou, I'm gonna ask you to come, so...
First of all, I need to get some court. So if the court is not, I mean, it's something, you know, not like five times the landscaping.
How much did the wall cost? I heard $30,000.
Thirty thousand.
I heard $30,000, right?
Thirty thousand.
$30,000 for that wall, okay. So...
If it can be lower, if it can be anything, you know, better than that.
Right.
We would have done that.
All right, but what I'm saying is, is what's there, nobody finds acceptable, but it's there. And we're looking for some cooperation and some good faith gesture on your part, which is gonna cost you some money.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. If somebody is gonna try and let us collaborate, let us find something...
It's gonna cost you some money, and the question is, you know, are you willing to invest another $15,000 or $20,000 to get it refaced? You know, if, as Mr. Ferreira points out, and again, I've seen it done before too, where they terraced it and they put in the, you know, the, the iron there so you can brick face a wall, you know, is that something that's within the realm of possibility?
No.
To spend $20,000?
Another $20,000, that's not a possible, absolutely not.
All right, so now we know, now we know it's not acceptable, okay. I'm just trying to...
I lose $20,000 based on all of this, if somebody's going to take that, you know, let somebody, let's take that, like my, you know, our builder friends, because I'm not making anything. I'm just keep on losing more and more.
I, I understand that, but again, we have a situation where, so $20,000 isn't reasonable for the town, for the neighborhood, to expect you to put up, to address the situation? Because you may get some assistance in trying to get a resolution to this if we can quantify what you're willing to invest. And again, maybe not even with, if you're saying, I'm willing to put up $20,000 bucks and hopefully we can get it done for less, good, we're not looking to spend all your money, but we're looking to get the situation addressed. If you're willing to commit $20,000 to address the situation, then people, then people can start looking at it and do some research for you and bring some ideas to you.
I don't have, I already spent, overspent, I mean, $60,000, $60,000 for a septic system. I mean, have you heard about this?
But, 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 but...
Okay, okay.
Okay, but, but again, that was a choice you made, you know, in order to try and make a profit on an investment.
I will never do this again.
Right, okay, you know, it's like you...
I'm new, I, I don't have, I don't have surface and, you know, experience. If I, if I have the knowledge and experience like the other builder, I wouldn't have done such a stupid thing.
Right, okay, but now we need to get out of this situation.
Absolutely.
All right, and in order to get out of this situation, it's gonna cost you some money.
I don't have another $20,000 to...
All right, so what do we have? What do we have to work with so that we can go out and help you research to get a solution that's acceptable?
Maybe I can help. You're already committed to landscaping. What was in your mind in terms of what you're willing to spend in terms of the landscaping? Well, why don't we start from there? You must have had some figure in your head that you had discussed with your agent, your real estate agent, who he has a piece, you got your developer who has a piece, you all must have collaborated and said, okay, X is the amount that we're willing to put in. So what was X?
We don't have an exact number for that yet.
You don't?
But you have an estimate as to what your proposal is, whether it's $8,000 or $12,000.
Right, right. I, I think for landscaping, probably just half my height and maybe 10.
Right, that's why I said eight to 12, which is, you know, rough on my mind too because I've been through a few of these things myself, yeah, so, sure.
Then you can also add the cost of what the fence would have been. Fence, you were gonna put up an ornamental aluminum fence around the front of that, probably at, at that length, probably talking close to, you know, between $3,000 and $5,000. So now we're at 13 to 15. There's also a cost of time or litigation cost. It looks, it looks like you may have some willing neighbors who are willing to pay an attorney to do what they have to do, one way or the other, so I think you and your partner should consider that as well.
Which, which will tie up sale of your property.
I'm just trying to help you quantify what may be available so that, give us something to work with. You want, work with you on it to get it done.
You, you know, we, I mean, we are willing, if, if you guys, I mean, you have the money to hire attorney to, you know, to do something.
We don't, we don't.
If you can contribute...
All these folks out here.
Yeah, if you can contribute that amount of money and we work together to do something, sure.
You didn't, I didn't just hear that, did I?
Sure.
Okay, that's a good sense of humor. But no, come on, let's get back to the issue at hand. If you start adding all these factors up, you had budgeted for additional landscaping, the savings and the cost of the fence, the cost of time, the cost of litigation, you add that in, and then I may believe that at that point, maybe, you're not coming out of this with a profit. So you should consider that when you go with Mr. Wood here, Mr. Kling, how much money do you have to put into refacing this wall? That's, I think that's your best alternative to satisfy this neighborhood.
So what about this? I mean, to reface the wall, let's bring our ideas. We are going to get, you know, I, I don't take that idea today. So we go back to get a course, okay? And for all our friends, neighbor here, if you have any idea, I'm going to write down my phone number, my email address, you can forward all of that to me, and I can, I can get a call back to you. So if, if, if the cost is feasible, we would, we would like to consider that, but I guess all the disadvantages, when you have all of those alternatives, those resurfacing, whatever way of resurfacing walls, it will come back to a point that you may not like it. Not only, I mean, right now it's like, oh, we don't like it, we don't like it, we don't have the money to do that, but when really come to the point, and then you guys, you may have, have a hard time to select which one, and the result of that is going to be, you know, you don't have the experience, we already have, you know, George had previously experienced, but, but I'm open to go back to get some courts, and, and I, I do like to, you know, discuss with you, and, you know, there is a restriction on our budget. So if that's feasible, we can, you know, it's feasible, you know, we like, we, we do a little bit less of the landscaping in other areas, and we, we don't do the front, front fence, and so if we can save, and also, and we are willing to collaborate, so we, you know, we, we try our best to spend some more money. So if, if it's feasible, we, we would try that. Why not? Because, because we want, we want, you know, that house to look better. We want, we want the landscape to be better, we want the wall to be better because we need to sell it. So it's not a conflict here, but I just hope, you know, you, you can understand us a little bit because we already spent so much, and we've been holding it a lot for four years. We keep on paying tax and everything, and we have paid, you know, construction cost for getting the property with high interest, like eight percent interest already for four years. So it's a terrible situation, and we would do our best. How about it? And by the way, one last thing, I do want to say that, we've been very careful, we've been following the, all the regulations, the oil conditions, the water health, and...
I'm gonna stop you there, I just, I just read one condition in the order of conditions, and there's not many special conditions. I believe there's three special conditions, or maybe there's five, but there's one you got a problem with already. Are you aware of that?
So, okay.
Are you aware of that?
No, we will, we will...
Are you aware of that?
This is important, Mr. Lou, I think you need to hear the chairman out of this. It's important, what he's talking about.
There's three special conditions. Two, I'll read it, eight to 10 evergreen trees shall be planted along the Westley property line between number six and number eight, Bishop's Way. Species may include spruce, white pine, hemlock. How are you going to do that? That's where your wallet's.
That's only, it's very front. The entire, the entire border to number eight is along 200, 200 feet.
Is there a wall written on it? No, it goes for... You got a wall.
The wall, you're only in the front.
No, no, you got a wall that runs down the main property.
You got a wall that runs, am I wrong?
That's right, on the front.
You got a wall... You got a wall that runs all the way down here.
Yeah, the entire property line is over two hundred feet.
Yeah, but then at the end of that wall, there's trees already.
I know, only the front.
I don't believe those special conditions were down in this area. It was supposed to be for here. This is where the mains have a direct look.
Sean.
Mr. Weiss?
I think I talked about those trees at the last meeting. Those trees were requested by the neighbor on that side to hide the house, and they're gonna go at the end of the wall, when the wall ends, and further back. It has nothing to do with the wall that's gonna be built.
Yes, I'm not, I can't, I got a-
The land goes back two hundred feet. The wall doesn't go back anywhere near there.
This is from there?
From the end of the wall, back.
Okay. Mr. Prisco? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the major, one of the big issues that come out tonight, Mr. Lou, that needs to be addressed, and I'm not sure we can address it tonight, is the whole issue regarding the water drainage. It is a problem, and, and I think it does have an impact on the getting a certificate of compliance. I think he has to prove, and I, you know, we have CPC here tonight, and I think-
That I can promise, I can, I can promise one hundred percent, because we can build, I assume the power plant, actually, the, you know, the set plan should already taking care of that issue. Well, if it's not, it is, yes, but-
It has to be a certa, a certificate of compliance from a registered professional engineer that shows the grades and makes sure that the drainage, that the drainage does not leak into other neighbors. And that has to be provided.
Okay, I can tell you this, we've already spent almost ten thousand dollars to hire our civil engineer to, to design, I mean, the whole site was designed by him.
I don't know if you want to bring CPC member up tonight to address what I'm saying, but I believe that's a big issue, that the town has to make sure we've-
Mr. Hayden, can you comment on that issue?
The drainage-
You have to come up to the mic, I'm sorry, Chris.
When we subdivide a property, we're not supposed to allow rates of runoff to other people's property. If it was already there, like it's a hill.
Sure.
That's, that's, that's all right, but we're not supposed to create more runoff to other people's property. In other words, if you build up a septic system, that septic system should not be allowing rainwater, snowmelt, to go across other people's property. If it's level and, you know, every, it'll spread out, but it's not supposed to run. And if this, if, you know, from, from what the neighbor said, the owner of the property, that he's got silt coming towards his basement window, there's an issue there. The system isn't finished, it's something that has to be taken into account by the builder, and you gotta have a, he has to have a, a plan done at the end to show that it won't, and that's done by the registered engineer, what Mr. Prisco said.
Those are the ASBILs.
Yes.
Those are the ASBILs.
ASBILs. But he has to make sure that the water doesn't run that way, and that's what the engineer is supposed to tell you. He's supposed to go out there and shoot some lines and take some measurements. So, but that's right at the end of the property. I mean, they may, they may be just have, probably haven't even seeded the property yet, but all the loom should be down, everything should be done when they do that.
Just a question. Mr. Hayden, I want to put you on the spot, but I just need a professional courtesy here, okay?
Yeah.
That's the site as it sits today, and what I've learned tonight now is that there's gonna be even more loom added to make the septic field even higher.
Right.
And then it's gonna gradually pitch.
Right, which means it's gonna run off the front of the, that wall.
Is, is that-
I'd have to check on that, but I think that might be an issue. But it, then he has that lower level, if it catches it, that's all right, so you're gonna have runoff over the front of that wall.
But Mr. Main's side, where-
Well, yeah.
Collegiate field that butts the Main's family, okay?
Right, and it's gonna-
And they're gonna be, it's gonna be higher on the Main's side, and it's gonna pitch down to the Main's side. It has to go over that wall towards his yard.
That's, that should be, that would be an issue.
It's an issue.
I mean, I haven't looked at, I haven't looked at any of the plans or anything, but from-
We squeezed a round peg in a square hole here. We did as a town. We can blame everybody we want, but we did it. And we have an issue. And this family over here doesn't deserve it.
I, I-
They've invested a tremendous amount of money to upkeep their property in this neighborhood, and now they're gonna get hurt probably for the rest of their lives.
Right.
And we can't, and we're doing that as a town, it's disgusting.
And as you know, we, this had, this never came back to us, because it was, it was subdivided in ninety-three was when the subdivision came out. And as far as we knew, it was an unbuildable lot. It sat there until three years ago, when they started with tobacco in there, and it was always, it had been a mess. And I was, all of a sudden, I got a call from Mr. Prisco saying that, "Have you seen the wall? Did you know about the wall?" And I didn't know anything about it, because I hadn't, hadn't been down there over the wintertime, which was unusual, because I'm usually all over the place. And I, it was just a, it was an interesting sight.
Mr. Larry?
Yeah, I had heard somewhere along the way through all this discussion that there were some orders of condition in relation to the subdivision as a whole-
Right.
-that each property, as it was being developed, had to come back before the planning commission for some sort of approval. What, what's-
Order of conditions for that property have expired.
Expired.
We own, we owns the streets now.
We accepted it.
We accepted, we accepted all the public ways. So, the order of conditions expired.
Even though there were conditions on each of the lots to be developed?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, could you enlighten me a little bit more? I know orders of condition-
I, I-
You know, why wouldn't, you know, as, as things are, yeah, we can accept a street and not have all the lots sold or developed.
I don't know, I don't think there was a specific condition on that lot that I can see.
What about across the board on all the lots?
The, it's the standard, it's, it, those, most of the conditions are the standard, sub, subdivision conditions that we put on it. They're in the subdivision rules and regulations. You know, it's, there's things that, you know, you're not supposed to cut trees, so many trees near the fifteen feet of your lot line. But that goes away after the builder goes away. You know, if somebody wants to cut down the trees in front of the house, they can cut down the trees in front of their house. And they've done that over at McIntyre Crossing, and, you know, it's not like, you know, we save trees, as many as we can, because it's better for the, for the look of the lot. It's better for everyone, absorbs water, all, all good things, but if, if the people don't want those trees there, or if they're causing a problem for them, or, well, if they die, that's one thing, but, you know, and they decide they don't want the trees, they can cut them down. That's, it's their lot at that point. We can only, we can only hold on to the developer for things of that nature. And once, once the, we accept the subdivision, even though there's an undeveloped lot in there, those, those orders go away as a whole.
Mr. Fear, you want to comment on?
Yes.
Come on up, please. Thank you, Mr. Hayden.
I think the erroneous assumption has been made about the drainage. Mr. Main mentioned a problem in some water going towards the cellar window.
You gotta talk to the microphone, sorry, people.
Some water going towards the cellar window, and I think that's probably, you know, a problem in relation to the ongoing construction that's going on right now. As I said at the last meeting, I did look at the drainage in both the pre-development and the post-development case. And I could give Mr. Prisco a picture of the drainage areas in the pre-development case and in the post-development case. You will see that, in the post-development case, less runoff will be going towards the Main's property, less runoff will be going towards Bishop's Way, and more runoff will be retained on the property. The runoff will probably be further reduced, because it'll, it'll longer be forested, it'll be grass, it'll have better soil than it had before. More water will absorb into the ground. So, I'm just trying to give you these pictures, and if you have any questions, you have a problem understanding, then just ask me.
Okay.
Mr. Prisco?
So, these are based on the most recent approval you gave for the change in moving the septic field closer to the street?
They're based on that, yes.
And so, what we learned tonight is that the loom is gonna go above the height of the wall.
Yes.
On the Main's side as well.
The finished grade along the middle of the septic system is, is the highest point, like coming right down the center of the lot from the house forward to Bishop's Way.
And it pitches off, it pitches off to the front, and it pitches off to the side.
Yes.
All right, well, come, I'm just, water runs downhill, doesn't it?
Certainly does, so does sword.
So, are you saying here it's not gonna run downhill, it's gonna run uphill?
No, I'm saying it's gonna run downhill. If you look at those pictures, you'll see that-
I, I'm just not educated enough, I have to tell you, I'm the wrong guy. Maybe Mr. Ford-
Please, please take my word for it.
Oh, Mr. Fear, you're asking the wrong guy.
Run off. Have a consultant of your choice look at it and tell me if I'm wrong.
Probably, probably the best, probably the best thing in my opinion to do that, you're right.
Excuse me, I have to take some exception. Mr. Fear has been working for this town for a number of years, is renowned in his field. Again, we may not agree with what transpired in relation to taking advantage of some opportunities that may have presented to us and may have been lost. But questioning his knowledge and ability, I think, is unfair. I think it's, I think it's grossly unfair, particularly coming from members of this board. He has served us well, he's renowned in his field, and I think it's very unfortunate.
The whole situation's unfortunate.
Mr. Main?
Hi, Debbie May Bishop's Way. I don't know what's going on in the plan, but, and I'm not an engineer, but this is my property, and one would think that a wall doesn't end abruptly. I think Mr. Galan brought it up last thing. See how it ends, you would think it would slope, and this is the dirt before we even had that big rainfall, you know?
Mr. Lou, is this how the wall is going to?
One would think they finished the wall, I don't know if it comes back.
What's your, what's your plan on the end of the wall on the Main's side of the property? She's showing me a photo that depicts the wall just ending, and then it looks like there's, I don't know how wide that is, five, six, seven feet after the wall, where you just have a slope of dirt, it may be larger, I'm looking at a small photo. What, what's, what's gonna happen there?
No, certainly a landscaping need to be carved out.
But the wall just ends, it doesn't slope?
Right, if, so if there, whatever they need to do, we need to-
The less laid.
Okay, I do want to promise-
Okay, no, 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 but I'm asking, is this, is this what you intended to do, is to leave it this way? I know you're saying something now.
I, I don't know, I don't know personally.
Who knows?
The builder knows.
Builder, yeah.
But, but I do want to promise, by the way, as I said earlier, I want to work with you, I want to make sure by the, by the property line, we have slills. Probably one, one on the top, one on the bottom in that slope on our property, by our property line. We have a slope to take the water back to the back, and I can promise that, and I have experience in that for, from previous projects. So, so that's how I can certainly promise.
I think I would, I think what we need to see is, what your finished product is going to be on the wall, on both ends.
Yeah, if, if, for that purpose, we need to continue with any more, more, we will do that. If we don't have other ways to make sure that happens.
Okay, you, you need that, you can't leave it like that, right? Would you agree with me, you can't leave it?
Because the better add is kind of hard to, you know, to make this made a wall.
Yeah, just like you can't-
But you were gonna leave it that way.
No, 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 we need, we will make sure.
But the wall is finished, the wall is finished, so what's gonna be left there?
Now, if it needs to be done in different way, we will do that. I will, this part will be built up.
Yeah.
I'm glad you brought that to my attention, I didn't realize it ended that way. That's what was approved by your- So, Mr. Fear, you're saying, if, if I'm to understand you correctly, what you're saying is, you are review of the plans, there's going to be-
Did you see this, Mr. Davis?
Once- Once the septic system and the developed home is complete, the water runoff on that property will be less than it is today, is that?
There'll be less water going on the Main's property, there'll be less water going over the front of the wall towards Bishop's Way. More water will be retained on the lot itself. I think there's a, a construction problem going on right now, and there shouldn't be erosion going onto the Main's property. And erosion controls can be put into place to stop that.
Who, who would then go out and check and determine if it needs erosion control? Is that conservation, is it you as the health agent?
It's not, it's, no, no one, it's not.
No one?
That, well, that activity is not within a hundred, I don't believe it's within a hundred feet of wetlands, and I don't think the Conservation Commission is interested in erosion controls to prevent siltation to wetlands or bordering vegetated wetlands. There's, no one really takes that into account. You know, I'm sorry, but that's kind of the way it works, so.
All right, what would you suggest? What would you say?
I would suggest that, I think it's, it's a very inexpensive problem to remedy.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm not done, please say, thank you. What would you suggest would be need, did you, I don't know if you saw the photo, did you see, what would you suggest is needed there for erosion control at this stage?
It's something that's used to protect bordering vegetated wetlands. There are hay bales and silt fences, and there are also, like, sort of stocking materials now that are filled with straw that are used in front of the silt fences. And I think if those were installed, you know, along with maybe some interim measures, just to degrade and try to stabilize the slope, I think it could, I think it could prevent that.
Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Main, a question, but in terms of what, or maybe I asked you to answer either one of you, in terms of where you're seeing that runoff, is it in that area that you showed me in that photograph? Is that where it's coming from?
To the end of the, end of the wall.
End of the wall.
Or the end of the wall.
Mr. Lou, can you please come up again? You know, the, this additional problem has been identified. Will you be placing, well, I'll request you to put erosion control in place by the end of the week?
From the very beginning, we-
No, 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 I don't want, I don't want to go back in time, I'm talking right now. Do I have a commitment from you, by the end of the week, you have erosion control in place in that area that butts the Main's property?
Fine.
You will?
Fine, fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't want to mention that from the very beginning, before we do anything, and that thing was installed, based on town requirements.
I'm sorry?
It's the town's fault.
We have the silt fence installed before we do anything, that's the very first thing that we've done.
But you saw how the, your builder had left the wall, right? You would agree with me, there's a four, probably a four or five foot slope of just dirt, and with rain, it's all washing onto the property. You wouldn't like it, would you?
I, I hear what you're saying, I promise we will do that.
By the end of the week. All right, board members? Mr. Siri?
You know, I sit here almost with my hands tied, very frustrated over this whole thing, and, you know, hoping that out of the clear blue, there'll be some legal means of doing something about it to help the neighbors out, and so far, not much has evolved. So, their lawyer suggested that we stay close to it, and I think that, based on, on her recommendation, and based on the fact that we don't have any other leverage, I suggested we do just that. And make sure that Mr. Lou follows through with the things that he's been asked to do. And if anybody comes up with any other suggestions associated with ways of forcing this ugly, despicable wall to be removed from the neighborhood, I'd like to hear it.
Anyone else? Hold on, hold on, no, hold on. Board members? Anyone else?
I, I get a quick one. You've been in this business, you told me last time we met, for thirty some odd years. I mean, as a real estate agent, how is that gonna help you seal your property?
As a real estate agent, I wasn't given any opportunity to have a different wall up there.
Oh, I know, and I'm not, and-
I don't have any control over the wall.
And I'm not, I'm, I'm, no, I'm not accusing you of anything, I'm asking you a question. I mean, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna-
I think-
Put a fossil sign in front of this property, you're gonna market this property, how do you market that property with that wall? Does that have advantages to you?
It's a lot better when the property's, it's under construction right now. There is no fill in there, there's no, there's no grass, there's no plants, there's no driveway, there's no-
Mr. Wood, I think you misunderstand the fact that, I mean, you got us what you're doing with it. doing with it.
And I'm not, I'm not privy to the conversation even prior to it being built, I was told that's what I had to deal with to try to sell, so you're asking the wrong person.
Okay, let me re-ask the question then. This house is completed, you weren't involved there from the beginning, Mr. Lou called you and says, hey, I want you to come and market my house for me. You're gonna pull up, and the first thing you're gonna say is, oof, I got a problem. Am I wrong?
Well, yeah, well, I mean, if it had a wall on it, it would have been a problem. I mean, now, it's, it's really going to fade into the property, I've seen walls all over the place, I don't think it's going to be as obnoxious as the property, as the construction gets finished.
Okay, so I'm sorry, we spent, this is our second meeting on it, we spent numerous hours on it, we had another meeting without the residents here, and it's really gonna, once it's done, it's gonna be invisible. Well, you said it's gonna, it's gonna blend in, I find that hard to believe.
Mr. Lou, this is what I'm going, to request that you do. The erosion control that you agreed to by the end of this week, you need to have your landscape architect do the drawings that gives a visual perspective from street level by the end of following week. You need to get multiple quotes on refinishing the front side of that wall, at least two, and I would suggest three quotes, by the end of the, end of next week as well. Once you have those complete, you submit those to the town administrator. In the meantime, this evening, you need to at least communicate and get contact information of the mains, the Annapolis, and the Ranaldies, and I suggest that you meet with them by the end of this week, to try to come to some sort of agreement. So, will you accomplish that?
Yeah, I'm trying to write down more, and so, I need to get a book, a course about the certain walls, and you start in, ask for that section by this, by this week.
You meet with the neighbor to the left, neighbor to the right, and neighbor across the street by the end of this week.
Oh, actually, I want, after this week, I want to see, I'll be there.
I'm sure they'll be happy to exchange information with you, and possibly pick a date and time to meet with the landscape architect, rendering. You already, you were able to get the landscape architect renderings, right? That's by the end of next week. Ross, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
We'll take a five-minute recess, you're welcome.
Well, you should know how to clear a room, Mr. Chairman.
Probably took me two hours, Mr. O'Leary, to do it, though, so I'm disappointed in myself. I tried to get out early, but no one let me up. All my fellow board members let me hang, and when I just said, uh, there's not much more we can do. All right, I think we're at, you back on?
Yes.
One second, okay. All right, we're gonna resume the meeting, and we're at point of town administrator performance evaluation.
Just can we back up a little bit, just on that, just on, you know, what are we gonna propose, and how are we gonna coordinate a proposal as far as the zoning by laws in relation to, these are the lots that are hanging around town, so that, you know, this doesn't happen again. And, you know, as I pointed out before, we need to be sensitive to, actually, what can the lots absorb and what can be built on them. We're not gonna deny people the right to build, but we shouldn't necessarily, you know, enhance their ability to build something that isn't suitable for the lot.
I believe Mr. Vali Konis has already communicated with town council in terms of drafting something that we can incorporate for our October town meeting concerning that issue, so.
Exactly.
It's been worked on, it needs, I agree with Mr. O'Leary, it needs, we can't be in this situation again.
And again, the developer didn't keep to his word, but he hasn't done anything other than lie to people, he hasn't done anything wrong. Everything, he's worked within the confines of the zoning by laws, Title V, state regulations, town regulations, and all the rest, you know, so-
That's the dilemma we find ourselves in.
Right, and, so what we need to do is, is if we can avoid-
I credit for the demand you put on him, though, even though we don't have a leg to stand on. You don't ask, you don't get, and you may not do it, but if he doesn't, we try. That's the, you know, that's, right, the way I look at it.
But, but again-
Going forward, we need something.
We do need something.
Town administrator's performance review. For the public that may be watching at home, they end up reading about it in the transcript, on an annual basis, the board, as individual members, reviews the town administrator in five categories. The categories are relationship with the board of selectmen, fiscal management, community and public relations, effective leadership of staff, and management slash professional skills and abilities. The scoring goes as follows, in each category, there's a subset of questions that are asked. Each board member then scores out according to the following. A board member may score an X if the board member feels that he has, he or she has lack of sufficient information to evaluate in that particular area. A one for unsatisfactory, a two for needs improvement, a three for satisfactory, a four for commendable, and a five for outstanding. If a board member in any one question which, within each category, scores a one for unsatisfactory or a five for outstanding, then the board member is then requested to give a short narrative as to why the score was a one or a five. After each board member then completes his or her evaluation, it then gets submitted to the chair, and the chair then compiles a composite, and that's what was done here again this year for Mr. Vali Konis. So, and then, once that's completed, it's submitted to Mr. Vali Konis for his review, late at date, which happened about three weeks ago, the chair or vice chair meets with the town administrator to give a private setting of the review, and also allow the town administrator to respond, and as he's done in previous years, and as he's done this year, he's provided a written response, as well as provided his list of what he categorizes as his accomplishments, which I will then list out. And the board this year took the step of taking the composite review and then compiling a summary of that review, it lists eight to nine categories, which, as I will be discussing in a short period of time, areas which the board would request the town administrator to work to improve on. In terms of the composite review, in category with the relationship with the board, the score came out as a twenty-eight point six out of a possible fifty for Mr. Vali Konis. In the second category, fiscal management, out of a possible forty, town administrator scored a twenty-three point one zero. Let me just back up, in terms of the twenty-eight point six on the relationship with the board, that ends up coming into a subcategory that indicates needs improvement. The twenty-eight, twenty-three point one zero under fiscal management, that comes under a category of needs improvement. The third category, which is reviewed as community and public relations, out of a possible forty, town administrator scored an eighteen point six, which then translates into a needs improvement category. Under personnel administration, out of a possible fifty, town administrator scored a twenty-three point eight five, that too falls into a category of needs improvement. Under the final category of professional skills and abilities, out of a possible fifty, Mr. Vali Konis scored a twenty-six point two, which falls under the category of needs improvement.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just as a, again, maybe it's a way of interpreting things, I mean, we have, like, in some categories where satisfactors are thirty or a twenty-four, he may have fallen below that, so to me, it would be like a low satisfactory rather than a needs to improve. You know, it's, it's not a cut and dry, you know, just as if he had scored, you know, a thirty-six, it would be, you know, satisfactory, but it might be more towards the commendable, it'd be a high satisfactory, satisfactory, low satisfactory, rather than, I, I don't want, well, at least I for one remember, I don't want the, and again, if you look at the overall rating, it comes out as a satisfactory rating, which leads to my comments in relation to a high sat, low sat, as opposed to a needs improvement. What was just on an individual basis on these composites, was projected to be a needs to improve when the overall is not, it's in the satisfactory range. So, I think, I think we need to clarify that it would be in the low satisfactory range as opposed to a needs to improve. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if you look at the overall rating, and where it falls, between ninety-six and a hundred and forty, it's a satisfactory range. Okay, so that, as we're looking at some of these scores, a twenty-eight point six out of fifty, again, the twenty is a needs to improve, a thirty is a satisfactory, it's closer to satisfactory than it is needs to improve, so I would consider that a low sat. All right? Next category, fiscal management, twenty-three point one out of forty, says here satisfactory is twenty-four, needs to improvement is sixteen, again, closer to satisfactory than needs to improve. Community and public relations, eighteen point six out of forty, that's closer to a needs to improve than a satisfactory. Personnel administration, twenty-three point eight eight five, thirty is satisfactory, twenty is needs to improve, closer to a needs to improve. And then, professional skills and abilities, twenty-six point two out of fifty, again, thirty is satisfactory, twenty is needs to improve, that's more to a low sat rather than a needs to improve. In your overall composite rating of the board, again, don't mean to pre-act, it was a hundred and twenty points, the range is one forty, ninety-six to one forty is what is considered satisfactory. So, I apologize, but I just thought the impression you were leaving was it was needs to improve across the board in all, all five categories, and that isn't the case.
Appreciate you pointing that out, but we all have this for the past, at least month.
But I'm just listening to what your comments were, I mean, that's all, that's all. And I'm looking at the overall rating as satisfactory, and that's not what's just being projected.
You are correct, the total score was one, one twenty point thirty-five, which falls into the range of satisfactory, the range being ninety-six to one hundred and forty. So, it was the overall rating of Mr. Vali Konis by this board for his performance over the last year. From this composite, then, what was compiled was the summary review, which I previously mentioned, areas which the board would wish to see Mr. Vali Konis to improve upon, and And the areas are delegation, his participation as a member of the Secondary School Building Committee. The Board wishes Mr. Vali Konas to take a, take a, take charge, particularly in Board meetings, become more engaged, more involved, and more proactive. In terms of the budget process, the Board has, the overall Board feels as though we need to change his approach in terms of the budget, have the budget vetted earlier, and try to think about ways to reduce costs. Also, the Board wishes for Mr. Vali Konas to try to be better able to accept constructive criticism and new ideas that are put forth by the Board. The Board wishes Mr. Vali Konas to have better regular contact with our two state legislators. Also, there was an issue that arose over the past year concerning our Veterans Agent that led to an audit by Veterans of Fears Administration. The Board wishes for Mr. Vali Konas to readdress with the Veterans Agent and take the corrective measures. And also for him to become better vested in his community. The Board recognizes that Mr. Vali Konas lives some distance away from North Reading. However, that was circumstances in the situation he found himself in when he was hired eight years ago. And we believe he needs to be more vested and more visible in the community. And in terms of nine, there are various projects that have been outstanding for some time. The Board wishes for Mr. Vali Konas to address the following projects and bring them to completion within the next three months, and better, we can find two of the completion dates on all, but those projects are the following. Andover Water Agreement, Petrosino Agreement, and the DOT Agreement. There are still outstanding issues. Secondary School Building Project, as was mentioned earlier, be more proactive. The Chestnut New Street Truck Issue, which this Board spent a great deal of time on over the last year. There's still an issue with the request for a truck exclusion. That was, I believe, put forward, or in the process of being put forward to DOT. We need to bring that to a conclusion. And also, sentiment that there is a employee morale problem. The Board is gonna ask, has asked, Mr. Vali Konas, to identify the root cause of the morale issue here at Town Hall, and if necessary, to use an independent source to get to a truthful, honest answer pertaining to that. In terms of Mr. Vali Konas and his response and his accomplishments that he listed for the past year, completed all steps necessary in preparation for the Moody's Bond Rating and Review, established safety committee composed of labor and management, completed code red emergency notification system, paid reimbursements due on the Richard Pierce disability matter, convened meetings with key officials resulting from the 2012 July 4th aborted fireworks, completed all required actions in the civil service for filing, filling the following public safety vacancies, lieutenant, lieutenant detective, sergeant, captain's, deputy fire chief, and fire chief. Requested that Mass DPH conduct an indoor air quality and cancer study at the Town Hall as a result of significant concerns dating back many years. Recommended actions to resolve the town's longstanding problems with document management and workflows. Served as in-house management representative for natural disasters, which include hurricane sanding in October 2012, and February 2013, Mr. Vali Konas?
Yes.
Blizzard. And prepared all required bid documents for the Hillview Restaurant Function Facility. Completed hiring actions associated with numerous staff vacancies in municipal departments. Undertook all required actions for a successful Employee Appreciation Day. Engaged the M A P C to have North Reading become part of the local priorities project. Coordinated all actions related to the revocation of the Piccadilly Publica License. Assisted with the resolution of the Petrosino versus Town of North Reading lawsuit. Completed RFP for solid waste and recycling collection services. Assembled brackets and documents required for review by Special Counsel of actions by the architect and project manager on the high school project. And every day, deals with residents, contractors, vendors, employees, and others who walk into Town Hall with a complaint or grievance. Those are the accomplishments listed by the Town Administrator, well, the past, from June of 2012 through June of 2013. So in summary, that's the evaluation of Mr. Vali Konas and his response thereto for the past year. Mr. Vali Konas, you get a comment?
No, I, I acknowledge the review, and I want to thank you and Mr. Masari for taking the time to meet with me and go through the review in detail, add an opportunity to read through the, the comments, and understand the constructive comments made by the Board together with the areas that the Board wishes to see me improve. So certainly, I, I understand that. I understand the task at hand, and I appreciate your time to, to take the time to meet with me.
Thank you. All we have left is all the new business, I believe. Mr. O'Leary? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know, Board members want, uh, let me back up. It looks like Board member's wanting to come through. Mr. Prisco?
Yeah, I'd like a chance to weigh in a little bit here, because I hadn't had the opportunity you and Mr. Masari had to speak with Mr. Vali Konas about the review. And, you know, the other day, I just got this, Mr. Vali Konas' response in writing, and, I don't know, I guess I was a little taken back by some of them. I thought maybe we could just have an open conversation about it, so I can understand, maybe.
Can I just ask for just a clarification?
Sure.
Which, which are you speaking with? The accomplishments or his?
Not the accomplishments, the response, the great Vali Konas' response to Performance Evaluation.
Okay.
Dated 20, June 20, 2013. And just in regards to the school building project, I read your responses, Mr. Vali Konas. And I hate that we've kind of narrowed it down to some of these little single things. You know, you go back and you read this evaluation process that we all spent a lot of time on. There's a lot of questions on each one, there's a lot in there, we've kind of narrowed it down to this little area, so it does seem a little nitpicky to me. But I just want to share at least my opinion on this, because the response I read from you, you know, where you write, "I was never asked by the Board to take a role in the request for, you know, supplement the fund, funding, and all these other, you know, dictating what your responsibilities are." You spell it, "It's a $175 million project." And it was a, oh.
It's not that high. Please, don't, don't give anyone a heart attack. $122 million.
I understand. We, we funded the project.
I had more phone calls than emails.
Well over $100 million.
I'm gonna have a heart attack.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's a hu, over, well over $100 million project, and that, my point is that we shouldn't have to ask for leadership. It really is all hands on deck, many of us are there, many nights, many evenings away from our families, as the crap was hitting the proverbial fan, and, and even on the weekends. And, and I think that's why a lot of the comments came that were provided to you. I just wanted you to understand that. I, I did submit one of those comments to you, and I think many other Board members did. It's leadership, and we shouldn't have to ask for it. And I think in your response, I, I was really taken back by the way you responded. And I think it is something you have to understand, that this town, the taxpayers pay a lot of money for you to be here and provide us your guidance and your insight, especially in a project this large. A lot of leadership was at these meetings in the nights and the weekends, and no one asked them to be there. And I would like to see you take that same initiative going forward. I'd like to bypass, you know, taking charge. I'm not gonna really give a lot on that one, but your comments about the budgeting process, you've heard me sit in this chair and say that I was very disappointed this year, and a couple of ones, a couple of reasons. One, we had to delay the process because you weren't prepared. And, and second of all, there was no creativity. Your goals that you set were pretty standard. There was really no encouragement of challenging your workforce and your department heads to encourage them to look at efficiencies and working together to try to find savings. If you go back and you read the questions in the review, you kind of focus on something that barely is touched upon in the financial management. I mean, when you look at financial management overall, you scored 23 out of possible 40 points, but when you actually go back and you look at it over three years, you've re, you've changed, your, your rating has dropped 25% over three years. Now, this Board's changed a little bit over the three years, so, you know, you at least had six people providing you a review, and that's a bad trend. So I think you give yourself a lot of credit in the budgeting and the financial management process, but I would like you to really go back and read the overall review again. Inability to accept criticisms. Yeah, it's, there's something, you know, I mean, you're aware of it. I would like you to go back, though, because I know I spent many nights working on your review last year, the year before, and we put these same comments in. We spent a lot of time writing them. Many Board members this year said, "What I said last year is this. What I said the prior year was this." I'm not, I'm not confident that you actually take any regard to our, our comments and our criticisms. The Veterans of Fear thing, I gotta say, this one here is the number one reason why I wanted to speak tonight. Because I'm quite, I'm not sure, and I read your comments, and you actually tell us that we should essentially butt out of dealing with your subordinates. And, Mr. Vali Konas, your subordinates did not come to this Board unliaisoned. She never came to me. The state came to us. You essentially told our Veterans Agent not to service our veterans in this town. That is the most upsetting thing I've ever heard in the three years I've been sitting on this Board. We have to service our veterans. I understand it's costing a tremendous amount of money to this town, but to actually direct our, our Veterans Agent not to service our veterans is unacceptable. And I read your comments, and you said right in there, you stand by your decision. I find that actually insulting to the veterans of this town, and this veterans is our community. And I think they, you owe them an apology, and you owe our Veterans Agent an apology. I think we gotta get this cleared up, and we need to get it fixed up right away. Because the state's reaching out to us, and the other reason that they reached out to us, Mr. Vali Konas, is you never replied to them. They reached out to you on several occasions, and they were left with no choice but to reach out to the Chairman of this Board and to reach out to the, to the liaison. You know, we, it's called communication, alright? If you have, you know, we have financial issues, we all know about it, but we should be communicating it. And it's an issue I take with your response. The employee morale, I, I just can't let that one go, because we do have a big problem. And I know many Board members want to invest in a consultant to come to the bottom on that. I'm not sure I'm, I'm sold on, on that idea, but the majority's gonna rule on this one. But the bottom line is, Mr. Vali Konas, there is an oppression, it's us versus them environment. And I will admit, I'm not perfect. I'm sure I'm some of the cause of some of the anguish around here. I'm trying to work on it every day that I do this job, but at the end of the day, you need to work on it, too. And they had, they have to be, they can't be told to avoid us and to avoid us as selectmen and to create an environment where it's us versus them. You need to be part of our team, too. We need to work together and get them to understand, you know, we sit here, we only here two nights every month. It's very challenging sometimes, and so, yes, sometimes we, we don't say the right things, but to have them on the other side scared of us, it's, we're in this together. And the last thing I want to say is, I'll just point out, because I have a few more other things, but I don't want to take up the whole night, is that in your accomplishments, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say in debate tonight, these are accomplishments. To me, they look like everyday tasks, but the one that I have to point out, because it just, I could not believe that I actually read this, the paid reimbursements under the Richard Pierce and disability matter. I just don't know how you can actually say that's an accomplishment, because it was a Board member here that brought this forward to us to get this thing rectified, and, you know, and I'm only bringing this up out of respect to the late Mr. Pierce and his family, because they, they at least, she came here and she told us that she's been trying to reach out, and she needed help. And for you to sit here and take that as an accomplishment, I think is an insult to their family, but that's just my opinion. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Board, it's only Mike Prisco speaking on that. So I'm gonna end it this way. Every category Mr. Delaney went through, Relationships, Financial Management, Community, on average, in the last three years, Mr. Vali Konas has been a 22% reduction, a continuous trend downward, and I'm not 100% sure why. I went back today, spent a good chunk of my afternoon, I read the last overall reviews that Mr. Masari had put together, the last two, and Mr. Delaney put together this last one. And I read the overall comments, and I read the overall areas of improvement, and they are so similar from year to year to year. I think you need to go back and look at it, and I think you need to take into consideration we're trying to provide you the constructive criticisms going forward, and I would ask that you, we made the time to provide you the review and put some effort into giving you some good mentoring and some counseling and some constructive criticisms that you at least respect it and go back and try to make change, because what's on this sheet deep here that shows your averages, they are all trending down. You know, we can look at it and say, yeah, you're on the lowest scale of satisfactory, but the bottom line is, it's a trend downward, and it's not a good thing, not for our Town Administrator in the Town of North Reading that is trying to grow, and we have a lot of growing pains ahead of us. Thank you for the time.
Any other member? Mr. Vali Konas, you get a response? Any other member? Well, Mr. Vali Konas, you know, you and I have met a couple of occasions regarding the most recent review, so, I feel as though I'm repeating myself, but I haven't said it properly. The areas that were most concerning to me is School, Secondary School Building Committee. And as I said to you, it was the vast majority of this Board rolled up his sleeves, and were putting in countless hours, and no one asked, I agree with Mr. Prisco on this, no, no one asked any one member, but we felt it was an obligation given what the town was facing to get involved. We had Finance Committee members volunteer, School Committee members volunteer, members of the Building Committee that don't sit on the elected or appointed Board other than the Building Committee, as well as the School Superintendent. And I know it's a school project, it's a, it's a town project. So disappointed me that, one, you didn't take an active role, and, two, your comment and response was that Mr. Prisco had stated that you weren't asked. It's disappointing to me that I saw that as your response. Not anywhere where I thought that would have to be asked participating. I took personal offense to your response to the Veterans of Fears issue. I think Mr. Prisco summed it up well. I took personal offense to your comment about Board not becoming involved in disputes with your subordinates, and Mr. Prisco's correct that your Veterans Agent did not reach out to me. I was contacted by the Veterans of Fears Administration as a result of them, or him, Mr. Hill, not being able to communicate with you. And you know, concerning the Veterans Agent's budget, we had a discussion in our weekly meeting following her budget presentation, and you had suggested to me you were going to take certain actions and take a directive towards her, and I had indicated, I said, "I would not do that," for various reasons. And you didn't take my advice, and you went and you did it, and it led to an audit that uncovered some other things that I hope that you take from this is that you will go back and rectify that situation. And I do think it's an affront to our veterans, too, because these benefits are there for them, for reasons, they, they serve this country. And every one of them that's entitled to them should get it. I know it hurts our budget, but that's what it's there for, and they're all, every single one of them that's entitled to any particular benefit should get it. I already talked about no vested interest in the community, and what your response was in terms of. I already talked about no vested interest in the community, and what your response was in terms of your commute. I think everyone fully aware you got commute, but that's what your commute has been for the last eight years. There was one other, I think one other particular area. Give you a moment. Then, the budget issue. I think the budget, I think you need to be more creative in terms of the budget, instead of just level fund it, level services, year to year. You need to challenge not only yourself, but your department heads in terms of looking at areas to reduce cost and savings. Or do we consolidate with other communities? And I think that's been requested in past years, but it seems to be the same old, same old. So those are my public comments to you, and it's what I've said to you in our private meetings as well. Mr. O'Leary.
Let me start by saying that, you know, yeah, I've sat here longer than most anybody. Mr. Mosseri has served just longer, longer than I have, and seen a lot of people come and go, too. I believe Mr. Belikonis is doing a good job under some very difficult circumstances. And the circumstances being, you know, the fiscal constraints and challenges that we've been facing, as well as the complexity of the personalities on the board. It makes it difficult sometimes to, to keep people happy and to keep everybody on the same page and moving forward. You know, I guess when I look at the composite scores, you know, particularly in relation to the fiscal management of the, of the town, I think whatever rating we gave him composite-wise is a reflection on us. I mean, we set the goals, the objectives, the, the guidelines that we give him and the department heads to put together a budget. And I can honestly say that the fiscal management of the town has improved significantly over the last few years under Mr. Belikonis's ten, uh, tenure. I think the way that this board has reacted to the fiscal challenges that we have has been very good, where we have been able to maintain services in very difficult and trying times. It doesn't happen by accident. And again, we're not here day in and day out. We're not here during the day-to-day operations. You know, he is, it's his administration. He, you know, the last, you know, not just last year, but two, three years ago, had to put together an entire new fiscal team along with other department heads. We were in pretty difficult straits in relation to disarray in relation to our, our personnel here. And he was the common denominator, held everything together, got some people in place, again, with assistance of members of the board and other, other people throughout the community. But it was through his leadership that we've been able to put together a top-notch management team. And from a fiscal standpoint, this town is in very good shape, and it doesn't happen by accident. And I don't think this is properly reflective of, of where we stand. The, the secondary school building committee, the secondary school building issue, not the committee, the issue itself. What we faced in that particular situation was a credibility issue. I mean, we had a financial shortfall, no doubt. And again, through no fault of the secondary school building committee, anybody sitting here, Mr. Belikonis or anybody else. We don't have to rehash this totally, but we got some bad numbers from people we've paid an awful lot of money for. And we got some bad numbers. And as a result, our standing in the community was being challenged in our credibility. And it was for us to step up to the plate, the elected public officials who went out there and sold this project originally, to go out and say, "Listen, a mistake was made, we need to move forward," and we did that. Not the appointed town official, town administrator, it was our job, along with the school committees and the secondary school building committee. And thank goodness, the public took a step back, took a deep breath, and said, "Okay, we're gonna trust in you again, and we're going to do it because we have to do it, and we should do it, it's the right thing to do." But that was because of, again, someone else on outside force here gave us some bad numbers. It wasn't his job to step up to the plate and lead the charge. It was the elected leaders to do it, and we were able to do it, thank goodness. And again, the secondary school building committee, you know, for seven years, never mind the last year and a half, but particularly the last year and a half, but extremely challenging, and we're successful. To hold him responsible to the degree that he's being criticized, I think is a bit unfair. Could he have played a, a more visible role? Probably. And again, constructive criticism, that's fine, but I don't think we should lay as much at his feet as being laid here. Again, I don't agree with Mr. Belikonis's decisions, you know, on a lot of things. But one thing I can say, at least he's made a decision on things. So I respect the fact that he's willing to make some decisions, he's made some, some choices. They may not be popular with me as a member of the individual member of the board or collectively as members of the board. But we're paying him for his expertise. We're paying him for his knowledge and ability, his thirty years in the business on, on running a community on a day-to-day basis. The names and faces here change over the years. We come and we go, you know? What we need is some continuity in the administration to hold things together. And for the past eight years, I think it's been done, and it's done fairly well. There's always room for improvement. And we're all gonna have difference, differences of opinion as to what role we should be playing. I'm, I'm more of one that, you know, we're more of a board of directors, we should be taking it more of an oversight, set policy guidelines, all the rest. Keep our noses out of the day-to-day operations. Other people have different side, different ideas. And, you know, we've been thrust together here. The board has, the, the community has put us together to be the board of directors and take whatever direction we're gonna take, and at times they make some changes. But it's our job to make sure that we have some continuity in an administrator and his staff and his management team to make sure that as the names and faces change, he can guide us, we can guide them. And again, our directions are gonna change. Overall, I think he's done, you know, a more than adequate job. I think he's to be commended for a lot of the accomplishments that he's, he's put down here, you know, in relation to, you know, Mr. Pierce's disability, disability matter. You know, could it have been handled differently before? Absolutely, but when it was finally brought, go ahead, it was handled. Should have been more time? Sure. The Veterans Affairs in relation to the report from the state, you know, not acceptable, not acceptable. There's no unanimity here on that. So, but to his point in relation to, it was his impression that maybe some of us got too deeply involved with the department undermining his authority, legitimate criticism, maybe not a good example.
You can, I just wanna, let me just, let me just, it wasn't, because he and I, he and I have discussed it, and Mr. Belikonis, since I sat on this board, there was at once that I have interjected myself, to my knowledge, and I've asked you this, and you've confirmed it, interjected myself in any relationship you had or any issue you had with any one of your subordinates or department heads, correct?
We don't have a disagreement on that.
Okay, all right. So that's why I was, I was the point person on that. So when I saw the response to that, it bothered me, because I don't do that.
When I saw it, it bothered me, too. So, legit, legitimate. But I think, again, I think at times we have a tendency to cross the line, and we have to be more cautious and careful. As far as employee morale, again, I know a lot of people here within Town Hall and have known them for years, so I get a lot of feedback. And again, most of the response I get is in response to what we project as a board in relation to our town employees and what we think. I think what happened with Mr. Fair tonight was unfortunate. But again, we all slip up at times, but we need to be more respectful of them. We need to foster a, an atmosphere where they're not afraid to communicate through the town administrator with us and at times with us individually, but that's not the case. And it's something that's our fault, it's not his fault. He's actually been a pretty good advocate, and from the feedback that I'm getting, most of the town employees in this Town Hall that work for the town in North Reading respect him for his ability and willingness to stand up for them, with us. So the morale problem, we need to address, in my estimation. So, again, the composite score is still satisfactory. It has been trending down, trending lower. Again, some of that comes with the change in the members of the board and what the expectations are. I've seen it happen before, and again, it'll ebb and flow. But overall, I think, again, from a fiscal management standpoint, we're in great shape. It's no mistake, didn't happen by accident. It's been under his guidance, his leadership, and again, he hasn't taken all of that. When it comes to, I think, Mike, you brought up, or someone, I'm sure you did, as far as, you know, sharing things. It hasn't come to fruition, hasn't happened under my watch, and it's been talked about for years. Would I like to see it happen? Yes. But overall, we're in good financial shape. The town gets a good bang for its buck, and they're paying plenty. And that's evidenced by the fact that they support us at Town Meeting, they support us on an override for the secondary school building project. It doesn't happen by accident. And I think when he gets up and he speaks at Town Meeting, people respect him, respect his opinion and what he projects as a professional image. So I look forward to another year.
I'm just gonna respond on the morale issue. Steve, I guess, we're probably talking to different groups of people in town, because...
It's not that big a group.
Yeah, it just, what I'm hearing, and I, I, look, I'll agree that we're to blame from time to time, but I'm hearing a lot, and no, no one really wants to jump out, and I can understand why, they don't want to be jumped out to identify themselves, because, you know, they, they work for Mr. Belikonis, all right? But what you're hearing is that there's an atmosphere in town, who knows whether it's true or not, but they're fearful of him. I'm getting that, too. I think that's why it's a good idea that we need to get, there is a morale problem. I think we can all agree there is a morale problem. So I think we need to get to the root, root of it to determine what is the composite. So if it's us, we know. If it's Mr. Belikonis or somebody else, we'll know. That's why, as a suggestion of Mr. Mosseri, I like it. But there is an issue here, and I don't think it's all one-sided. I don't think it's all because of what the board projects. I think there's multitude of reasons for the morale issue in Town Hall. I want to find out the reason for it and to correct it, because it's not healthy. It has to be uncomfortable for people walking to Town Hall and work here five days a week.
I'm sorry?
I think it's uncomfortable to walk in. If, if, if the morale, what I perceive to be, there is a morale issue, to come into a building that you work five days a week and there was a morale issue, it's tough to get up and walk, walk into Town Hall and work every time. And it shouldn't be that sort of atmosphere for anyone. So I think we should identify what the issue is and make, take the corrective action, whatever that may be. Mr. Mosseri.
There are times I'm very embarrassed, being a member of the Board of Selectmen, with the behavior that goes on. And I know there's a lot of stress, and there's a lot of emotion, but I think we do not present ourselves in our best image in the public on occasion. And I don't know whether there's a morale problem. And my suggestion was one to determine, if there is one, what are the root causes of it and address it, not to blame, but to fix, all right? So I'm not going around saying there's a morale problem. I'm going around saying there's rumors of a morale problem and that...
That's a better way to put it, I would agree with you.
And that, one way of getting to the bottom of it is to have someone independent that maybe can gain some trust. We gained it with the, when we hired the insurance consultant, as you remember, in terms of dealing with the employees, because there was someone that could talk to them on an insurance level, and we made a lot of inroads. And I think the same thing would apply here. And then, whatever it happens to be, address it and put it to bed. So I think the review to Mr. Belikonis was somewhat harsh in some areas and a little unfair, and I told you that. I also think there are areas, and I think he agrees, that he could put more effort into. And since you and I have spoken to him, I've seen some extra effort, and I'd like to see it continue. And I, I'd like us to go away in a positive way this evening, saying we've gone through the process. I think we've done it in the open, we don't have to agree to agree on everything. But overall, I think Steve said it well, that I, I think, and I've been around for quite a while, too, is that we lose sight of the fact that there's two sides to the town administrative job. One is associated with the board and the, and the goals that we set and those kinds of activities that come to our attention. And then there's many, many more things, probably percentage-wise larger, that go on day-to-day that we're oblivious to, literally required to keep the town going. And he doesn't get credit for that from the point of view of our visibility. And to some degree, maybe that's his doing, because he doesn't make a lot to do out of it. But, you know, I think that we have to take that into consideration when, you know, we're providing feedback to the town administrators. I'll leave it at that. It's getting late, we got...
Anyone else wish to comment before we move on?
I'll just go one quick thing, and it's not, it's more so much about something that Steve said. I, I agree with Steve saying that, you know, we're somewhat like a board of directors, but, but unlike a board of directors, you know, we see the weekly payroll, we see stuff like that, and we should be able to ask the questions. And I'm, I'm not putting my name on something that I'm not satisfied that I have a good reason for. And I'm not, it's not about not trusting anybody, it's just about having the knowledge. You know, I mean, when someone comes to me and say, "Why is this group working?" I'm not saying that those people are correct, but I want to know why it's being done, so when I get asked that question again, I know it. That's, that's, you know, so it's not so much, I know the word "Michael managing" was thrown around and all that, but it's, it's being able to ask a question, get an answer back, and not feeling that we're stepping on people's toes. And that's sometimes how, and I'm not saying the town manager, the town administrator makes you feel that way. I'm just saying in general, when you ask, when I feel like when I'm asking a question, when it comes to stuff like that, that it's, it's kind of taboo, you shouldn't be asking that. And I have to ask that, if, if I'm gonna put my name on a document.
Okay. Board members, thank you all, thank you, Mr. Belikonis. Now go to all the new business. Mr. O'Leary, starting with you about half hour ago.
Just quickly, again, wish Mrs. Stats speedy recovery. And also, our fireworks expert and member of the CPC has also been a little bit under the weather this, this past week and spent a little time, I guess, in the hospital, and wish him a speedy recovery. I understand he's recovering fine, too, Warren Pierce. And...
I hope it had nothing to do with the firework.
Inhaled too much smoke?
Wish him a speedy recovery. Also, in addition to that, congratulations to the Fourth of July Committee, thanks for bringing it back. All the feedback has been extremely positive, and Warren's fireworks show was phenomenal along with everything else. So, you know, hopefully from a financial standpoint, it, it came out okay, but from a community standpoint, it was a huge success. And very few people pulled it together and did a terrific job. And I think we should acknowledge that somehow or another. But again, we have all these volunteers, boards, committees, and commissions and stuff like that, but this Fourth of July Committee, between what happened last year and still having the stamina to stick with it and bring it back, and it brought it back in style, to be congratulated, it should be done publicly, I think. Just a suggestion.
We can do that for our next meeting? Discuss the date?
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Ford.
Again, my wishes for a speedy recovery to, to Mrs. Stats, and based on what Mr. O'Leary said to, to Warren also. Hope they fill in better soon. I just have two quick things. Gray, I know you and I have exchanged emails on their Route 28 auto sales, and I will tell you that I go by that on a regular basis, I count the cars, and there's no less than twenty-eight cars, twenty-nine cars on a regular basis. I actually kept the tally at home, so I think we need to move forward with whatever else we need to do as far as finding...
We agree. It's a fifty-dollar fine for the second fence and as limited as sixteen vehicles. We, I verified that with Mr. Decoll.
It's fifty dollars per fence?
Correct.
So if Mr. Decoll goes out there five days a week, it's, and it's, he's over that number.
Correct.
Because this weekend, he was at thirty-one again. And, you know, me as myself, you know, I, I, I gave, I gave him the benefit of the doubt. New guy, I wanted to give him the fair opportunity, despite what, you know, other things that I had heard, because I don't want to make him accountable for the actions of the previous owner, but he's doing exactly what the previous owner was doing, so I think we need to, to address that.
And I agree, and I did speak to Mr. Decoll after receiving...
And, and I want to thank you for getting back to me as quickly as, as you did, because I had, I actually had gotten a couple of complaints out of myself, and, and you were kind enough to respond to me quickly, so thank you. The other thing I want to bring up is I know I'd sent everybody an email several weeks ago and, or maybe a month ago, but I didn't follow up with it, is the town's three-hundredth celebration. I think we need to do something to acknowledge that. I think we need to do something to acknowledge that, as far as moving forward, and I don't know how, and...
It hasn't seemed to have drawn a lot of traction yet, has it? I mean, they've been scrambling around to get other committees involved.
I think, I wonder if we try to tie something in with the Apple Festival? I think that may be a good timing, if there's something that can be pulled together, maybe an opportune time to do it. I don't know what else we would...
I think I need some leadership.
But it needs, right. So I don't know, I know Gloria Mastrow has probably contacted all of us, had some discussions regarding it, and, boy, she knows, she knows the history, that's for sure.
Yep.
So, I don't know, who is on the historic, is it Historical Society? Do you know Mr. O'Leary? I know there was a couple of members...
Back a number of years ago, when, was it the Centennial or something?
Well, would you do the 200?
That's what I was just going to refer to. We had a coin. We had the coin, right?
Who was the group that was behind that?
I think it's the Historical, Historical Heights Queen Society, I think, headed it up.
It seems like, I know that the Friends of the Council on Aging, I think, were approached to get involved, and I'm not sure they jumped on it. I mean, it seems to me that if we're serious about doing something, then we've got to get some critical mass going.
I guess, I guess we start with the Historical Society. See, I don't know if there's any, I know there was a member that resigned, or two that resigned.
Two members, actually, the chair and...
So I don't know what it's down, does it down to one?
I'll have to check tomorrow when we're...
And maybe, see what their thoughts are. Mr. Frisco?
Yeah. In the meantime, this is obviously going to have some level of expense associated with it, I would assume, to, we're going to do, you suggested maybe a coin, or if you've done something in the past.
I didn't say anything about a coin. I heard...
No, we did. The coin was minted previously.
Okay.
And sold, you know.
Well, is there any money available to them, from the town side, to help facilitate this celebration, or recognize, no, there isn't anything?
Not at this time, however. We could do something at October Town Meeting.
I think we've got to find some leadership and find out who's doing what.
Yeah, because, yeah, that's true, but at the end of the day, it's going to...
In 1963, which was the 250th Select Plan and a Treaty on the Town Hall in commemoration of those of the Big Bang, at the old school, which was brand-new at that time, and they invited selectmen from the town of Reading, because that's what the anniversary is, coming in North Parish of the town. We were still part of Reading, but it became the North Parish, because that's when they hired Reverend Daniel Putnam. He came up as a separate parish from the town of Reading. At that time, Reading encompassed Reading, North Reading, and Wakefield, which was called Self-Reading. It was all one big town, and it had three separate parishes. North Reading became its own parish in 1713, that's the date behind it, the seal. That's what it is.
The Father Chair of the Centennial Committee.
The anniversary of us becoming a town was 1853.
Yeah, which is awesome.
And 150 of that was in 2003, at fireworks, if it were the part.
Thank you.
What was the year they celebrated? Was it the Centennial?
The coin was the bicentennial.
Bicentennial. Yeah, I have one of those, or a couple.
1976.
That's right, it was right after we moved, well, I mean...
I have the pewter one, I have the gold.
I couldn't afford the gold. But that's what it is, and that's what they did in 1963.
Gold?
Bankroll.
Bankroll and a tree.
Gold coin, though.
Silver coins. Did they have gold coins, too?
It was, gold was layered in gold.
Oh, wow. It was a little outside of my financial reach at the time.
I would just, similar to that, suggest one town that I worked in, and I can't recall what the celebration was, but they actually made a Christmas ornament that they sold for the holidays, which was, I still have it. So, I can tell you it's something that you put up every year and you think of.
I tell you that, I can...
If we knew who this group was, we could invite him to a meeting, maybe, and...
I think we start with Mr. Foddy, contacting Historical Society, seeing who the existing members are, invite them in, and we can have discussion probably at our next meeting. We need to move. This is the August before we have our next meeting, so we don't have any...
I remember how quick the zip trip came together, so perhaps this can move at the same pace.
I suspect it will not, but we can endeavor to do so.
I didn't need the Historical Society to do that.
I'm going to go back and ask my wife, because she knows, I know those are some...
Volunteer, by the way, when you talk to her.
Volunteer, right.
Are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mosseri?
I'm all set.
Mr. Frisco?
What's already been said is...
Dropbox. The meeting, I had a little difficult finding the meeting packet tonight, so is that how we're going to do it now?
No, we were unsure the problem, if the problem two weeks ago had to do with the file name.
Okay.
So we did it a little bit different, and, I don't know, did anyone have any problems with this week's packet?
Once I found it, no.
Yeah.
I didn't find it in the Dropbox. I did it through that other email that you sent. Yes. And then the link that way, I printed some of it up. Which is probably not a bad way to do it, is through the link, but we'll revert back to the old file name system, so that everyone can find it.
I think it's easy.
Did the Dropbox that you're submitting the information to get updated, because there's been a bunch of updates to Dropbox?
We're not sure of what the problem was. Selectman Delaney and I had a problem even opening the file, we couldn't do it. Not sure exactly.
No, the issue was, Greg, whenever I got my laptop and I opened up Dropbox on my laptop, I could read the file 100% of the time. And that's when I took that file and I put it into another application to get it to my iPad.
So you were able, the packet from two weeks ago, you were able to open that on your laptop?
Yes, but not on the iPad. That's why I thought it was...
I was able to open it on my iPad.
You what?
I was able to open it on my iPad.
You had either a...
I had 2.2.2 version.
Yeah. So I think it was a Dropbox version issue. You know, every few weeks, there's an update.
Yeah. If you, let us know how that's going to be in the future, I'd appreciate it.
You want to say, next meeting, just do it both ways, and then if we can't open it...
Orvert to the old file name.
Go the old way, yeah. That's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, the old way works for me, but...
Yeah. Just in case there is a problem, again, that way that we were able to get it, and try to come up with a solution to the problem. Because I think the way we had been getting was nice and easy. Boom, D O S data meeting, that's it.
When's your next financial planning team meeting?
Mid-August.
Well, I just want to circle back on the civil fingerprint article. I would like to get the ball rolling on that, so we don't miss the boat in October. And I assume there's going to be some contact between probably you, Mr. Delaney, or Mr. Mosseri with the Finance Committee to, like I said, I talked to a few members, they've seemed to be digging the heels in a little bit, that, because they were a little upset the way we seemed to approach it, so I'd ask them to...
But I think the issue's got nothing to do with financial planning team.
Well, I'd like to get all that worked on, so it doesn't, nothing gets delayed.
It's an issue of coming up with a revised list, right, which is...
Again, I was told we cannot do that until we get their approval.
Yeah, but it...
That's the Finance Committee.
Right, that's what I meant.
Oh, I see.
You said Financial Planning.
Sorry.
But I think what we need to do is to decide...
Because they need to contact, I mean...
Decide which licensees we want to require. Call that list out until we think it's appropriate.
Let's do that.
And then go back to them and say, this is what we wish to do.
I don't see them blocking it.
To me, if we decide as a board that we want to push this thing forward, we should move forward with it, and the Finance Committee can react to that. And I'd like to have them on board, but if they, you know, if they want to dig their heels in and say, no, I think it's silly, but, you know, that's their choice.
But I think we're better off going back with that list that's called.
I think we should just let the Finance Committee know that it's the intent of the board to move forward with a revised list, okay?
I'll do that.
From what we have, revised, and that we could hope for some support to move forward on it, rather than staying the other way.
Yeah, if we could just keep that going, that would be good.
The thing is, it's grown to the point where...
It was crazy.
We're trying to stay easy without...
Greg, any update on the new, on what's going on with the new fire truck? And I know you sent us an email saying that one was down.
Yes. The bid document has been reviewed, I've completed it, it was sent off to Town Council. Town Council made a number of substantive changes to the bid document. It was then returned back to the Fire Chief, who submitted it back down to the Fire Truck Committee, and I'm awaiting a meeting with the Chairman of that committee to finalize the bid specification.
In the meantime, the Chief feels that they're all right?
Yeah, no issue, right.
No, there are no issues. The Chief has also investigated, looking at the state bid list as an alternative to putting the truck out to bid, and I've encouraged him to do so.
Okay, and, let's see, can we get on the agenda? Can we get an update on what our legal counsel regards to the school project, and where things are?
They just sent an email to Mr. Valiakonis and myself. We need to provide them with additional documentation, which they requested, so we work with Mr. Valiakonis again, that to them forthwith.
And Mr. Mosseri, just a quick question, National Night Out, is there anything that needs to be talked about tonight, or any new updates? I know, I heard you guys got the money, use the money, right, that we have remaining?
We got approval to spend past a year on what was left of $25,000 for National Night Out, which is August 13th. And I missed the last meeting, because I had a conflict.
Okay.
And I'll report back at a next meeting.
Good, that we got the money, that's...
And we also think we're getting another $25,000, although based on what's going on, I haven't heard any more. Have you heard anything, Greg?
I understand it's not in jeopardy whatsoever, because the...
No, I'm not talking about the current money.
The new money?
We were also told we were going to get, we may get another 25.
Grant.
I don't think we'll hear anything until the budget is finalized and signed at law.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Frisco? I, too, wish to send my best wishes for speedy recovery to both, Mrs. Stats and Mr. Pierce, and also thank the Fourth of July Committee. I think I would have dropped out of last year. I really do. The only other issue I have is, when I, I was out of town for July 4th, but when I came home on the 5th, I noticed that there was crosswalk signs that were in various locations, particularly the ones I noticed were on 62 at Central Street, and one, I believe, down near the intersection of Central and Chestnut. And then I was like, oh, this is good. And I noticed they installed some signs, at least the ones I have seen, on 62, as you approach in Central Street, saying, Central Street 300 feet away. So I was hopeful that those crosswalks signs could remain, but then they were down and gone. So, is there a way that we can put those up permanently?
Yeah, I've actually noticed crosswalk signs in some smaller neighborhoods, I mean, just driving down, like, Lindor Road, noticing multiple crosswalk signs through that, through that neighborhood.
The crosswalks were painted there a year or two ago, when they did this, when they did the street, they put in sidewalks where there weren't any.
Did the...
And they had put crosswalks where the sidewalk runs out, and you have to cross the street to continue on the sidewalk. But there were no signs, so I looked, and maybe there's some...
Some of the residents bought them.
There are yellow crosswalk signs that are there, and I happened to notice some today when I was driving up in the area. So we could put the signs along Route 62, that you've requested, the main signs.
We have them. We have them, obviously, because they were out for July 4th, unless they were borrowed from somewhere. But I would think that they, I don't know if they were on Chestnut Street.
Did they create temporary crosswalks?
No, no, the crosswalks are there.
Or right where the crosswalks, yeah.
This was, Central, at 62 and Central Street? There was one right in the middle there. There was one, I could see it was further down, as you pass Ipswood Trigger Park. I don't know if it was at the intersection with Chestnut, but it was close to...
Yeah, I believe there was one there.
That, there was a, there was a crosswalk there, you cross over. And I would imagine they put them down on Chestnut Street, near Kids Bar and Guaya Field.
Maybe they were the end of it.
And there was an email that came, too, from one of the residents of Chestnut Street, inquiring about the same, but I had noticed it, and then, as he did, I noticed that it was gone.
We can go back and look at those locations, and we'll get those signs put back up. Excuse me, just in relation to the Chestnut Street issue, and I saw something in the comments on the review, T A's review, you know, it's one of the goals, to get it closed.
Get it closed, closure, not, we're going to get the truck excluded.
No, no, but...
Get closure to it.
What's the closure? Permission from...
Well, we had indicated that we'd go to DOT to request the truck exclusion, which required us to get permission from Reading in Wilmington, Greg?
Yes.
I believe one community, last I had heard, had given permission. The other, I'm not sure. Just bring that, what I like to say, bring that to a head, see where that gets us. Other than that, it's enforced, these crosswalk signs. Police visibility. It may end up, it may end up being that, but let's bring it to closure, that's what I mean by closure.
We need a refusal for...
Yeah, they give us a refusal, so we attempted to do it, we didn't get it, and...
That's what we told the residents.
Refusal, oh, okay, kind of the other.
Yeah.
Sounds like we got one okay, and we only went one way.
Well, we got the okay from one community, the DOT still has to sign up. So that's what I'm...
I'll just, I sound pretty much done, but that's why I was...
No, it was left, it's been left hanging.